I guess I guess people want to talk on different issues, on different... okay.
Chat back, pass me on.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
I'll give that to you.
You have to go get a whole new wardrobe since you've lost all that weight?
I did, I did.
A bit.
I just cinched mine up. I'm not getting a new wardrobe.
I, uh... I went to the RMA last year, July.
How old are your stuff?
I'm thirty-four now.
Okay, good. Thirty-four, yeah.
All my suits had...
Oh, yeah.
Darius out and put it back in.
Taken in or buy new pants because...
I'll plug it into that one.
What do you know, we wear forty-four, forty-four suit?
Forty-four regular. And, um, I'm forty-two here now, but still forty-four there, so everything has to...
There's software on your device, so it wasn't installed.
And we're forty-three. This is actually a forty-two. It's a little tight on the...
I ran off the iPad. I didn't know why I liked riding so much.
That's good. That's what they call European tape.
Yeah, I mean Italian cut.
Italian.
Alright buddy.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
That's why when you look at them, most have them, you know, forty-four.
Yeah.
Sometimes you take them in, pocket them right there.
Darius never...
And the pants have to be recut sometimes, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The belly and the portion, because that's the gap. I'm watching.
Yeah, well, I tell you, I've been lucky all my life because I've stayed pretty much the same, you know?
You're a bit sharp like you really do.
We're an old boy that's seventy-one.
Running magazine. We really do.
Trying to load software.
Mr. Flag Day down there. Mr. Flag Day, hey, you want to lead the Plague of Allegiance since you've got your flag?
You can salute me.
Okay.
Excuse me, I take it you have all your information?
I did.
That's where I followed up.
I think we're about ready to rock and roll here.
Which, uh, which one is this?
It's a GPI. It's back here and I just saw that.
Is it on end time or...?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It is gotten like here.
Okay, so it's on the end time?
Yes, but this is permanent thing.
Of course, you're going to try and...
You know, they haven't in a long time. Ag easement, but other than that, they haven't done this in over a couple of years.
Yeah.
What do you got? Seventy-five?
Almost like, I feel like we should turn around, nervous because we're staring at it. Unhumorize everything.
Are you ready?
She's slow too.
You didn't know about it. There's a localized ability to specialize a program within the county.
Oh, good.
Need a little more time there or you...
Um, what are you going to, continue it?
I would just like, I'd like, I'm going to pull from...
How long?
Um, I, how, how, however, however long, we don't need to...
Hey, Dad.
But I'll just mention it.
Okay, alright. But, but your, your points are low.
Okay, okay.
Second line. And where's the show?
I know.
Our...
It's, it's...
But no, I understand.
There. Want to save to desktop, save to desktop.
Are you ready for a marathon? I mean, this is going to be fun like he doesn't know.
Babe?
I want that doughnut now.
I would, yeah, I would have. Okay, pull it, pull it over so you remember where it is. It's easier that way.
Good morning and welcome to the June fourteenth Board of Supervisors meeting. Join us in the flag salute. We'll be directed by Supervisor Vanderpool and stay standing for a moment of silence following.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, we'll start out with Supervisor Matters, Supervisor Vanderpool.
Alright, well, well, if anybody was wondering why I actually led the flag salute, Supervisor Anderson usually hogs that one, but I guess when you wear a flag to the board meeting on your tie, you get a chance to lead the flag salute. But it is in commemoration of Flag Day, so I hope everyone looks at that flag and understands why we have it symbolizing our country. Just a couple of things, I just wanted to real quick say a quick thank you to the residents of Tularean District Two for another opportunity to serve them for four years. I'm very grateful. And also I'd ask members of the audience to pray for the birth of my daughter who has not come yet. My wife thought as soon as Memorial Day that she was going to be giving birth and here we are a couple of weeks later and she's due on Thursday. So I could get that called anytime and if I get up and leave the meeting, you know why, but otherwise, everything is, is all good and I hope for the arrival of a beautiful, healthy little girl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Supervisor Cox?
That's it.
That's it. That's all I got for right now.
Okay, first off, we had a tragic event happen on Sunday. My heart goes out to those in Florida, the LGBT community, those that lost family members, those that are still in the hospital, tragic event. And I was amazed at, at how many things started hitting the internet within, it seems like, minutes. It was the guns' fault that, that caused this. And so it's very unfortunate that something, a tragedy like this happens and different sides try to make political issues out of it tragic. I think we ought to remember these folks in our prayers. Next, the, last week was the first week of Summer Night Lights throughout Tulare County. You know, we're having, I believe, a hundred and five or a hundred and eight activities throughout the summer. Our first week, we had over two thousand people countywide attend the Summer Night Lights event. And of course, Dinuba is the winner again with, uh, six hundred was the count that they had attending their event. Last Friday, I attended the Rawhide game with our Child Support Division, had a great time there. There were probably fifty or sixty folks there, had a good time with them. This Wednesday is the Visalia Economic Development Corporation meeting at seven AM. At three PM, Ag Advisory Policy Committee meets in our RMA boardroom. And Thursday, in the City Visalia Chambers, or the Commerce is going to be having the Man of the Year, Woman of the Year, Business of the Year awards, and that'll be at the Convention Center. And then next Monday, Tulare County Association of Governments meeting is at one o'clock here in A and B. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Worthley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last Thursday, I was fortunate enough to be at the Tech Connect graduation ceremony in Cutler Rose School's. Over twenty kids received certificates and a hundred and fifty dollars stipend for the work they did to help people apply for their income tax refunds. Friday, we had a, a San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure meeting at the Fresno Irrigation District. That progress, that continues to progress. We have one year's time in which to get an application before the Water Commission and we'll have our hands, we'll be very busy next year getting that accomplished. Yesterday, I attended a Tree Mortality Task Force meeting in Sacramento. I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about that. There is a Leisure Pines Pilot Project that occurred up in Tuolumne County, which was an example of cooperative effort between, um, the utility company, the county, um, I forget, there was, there were three or four different entities involved. And what they did was they each took on certain responsibilities. So PG&E took down the trees, the county was responsible for hauling the trees away, and this, this was able to help a community. This, this is an issue of private property where use of personal or public funds, you have to be careful that you're not making a gift of public funds. But along that line, PG&E was there and Edison was not, so I don't have an, I, we will need to follow up with them. But PG&E is just getting ready to make a public announcement that if you're, this, these are, of course, were places that are up in the mountains, that if you have trees where they are greater in forest and diameter and six feet in length, where the debris is within a hundred feet of the permanent structure, so of a home. The idea here is that, that a tree that would fall on it would affect the electrical systems of the house and that's PG&E's concern. And the debris is within twenty feet, or if the debris is within twenty feet of serviceable roadways and is accessible by equipment and machinery, then PG&E will come in and at, at the, depending upon what the property owner wishes them to do, they will take down a tree, leave the wood on site, they will chip and broadcast the wood on site, or they will load and haul, haul the wood away. So for private property owners, this is a real godsend because it may be the only opportunity they really have to have someone come in and take down trees on their private property where they're not having to come in, you know, reach into their pockets. And it's, it's a real issue in many parts of the county. A lot of retirees live in the mountains and many times they're, they're financially strapped, so this is a huge, huge program. It's going to be so large, PG&E will actually be contracting out with a third party to actually handle the call volume because it's anticipated. When you look at PG&E's service area, so much of it is in this here Nevada, there's going to, there will be a tremendous outpouring, I'm sure about this. But we do need to check with Edison and see what, I think they're going to be doing something similar to this. I know that, that they've taken the position that they are responsible for any tree that could fall on a power line. And it's not just their main distribution line, it's any power line, even to the drop line to, to people's homes and cabins. So very important information for people who are in the mountains, and that's what I have today.
Thank you. Supervisor Ashida?
Last week, we had the privilege of going to the South County Jail facility groundbreaking and all the supervisors and our CEO and our staff was there. It's a great moment for Tulare County. It's over a sixty million dollar project. We just are looking forward to making some significant changes in the way we detain prisoners. Last week, I attended a, I'm trying to think, Emerging Agricultural Technology Pathway Program in Strathmore. And I'm very pleased on the pathway programs, especially the ones I'm, I'm involved in is the EEP program. And the math teacher was there and I asked the math teacher, "How does this equate to how he's teaching his class?" And he says, "These kids have a hands-on appreciation of math when they have to figure out graphs and tables on the rate of growth and the production of certain products." So while we were in school, we just got straight math and we memorized math. A lot of kids just can't, couldn't relate to it. But with the pathway programs, not only in agriculture, they have a way to, to use the math, uh, in a real-life situation. So Porterville, uh, Porterville School District has gotten a lot of positive feedback from the pathway program and I'm, I'm really impressed with what they're doing. One of the things that are coming up, and Supervisor Cox mentioned the, the shooting that we recently had. Uh, we have at least five bills in the state legislature that are a direct attack on the Second Amendment. And what bothers me the most is that when I was eighteen years old, I bought a pistol. That pistol had thirteen rounds. These new laws will make me a misdemeanor offender if they pass because I have more capacity than what they want to have in the state of California. So I think this is a very serious subject and I hope to have this discussion with the board on taking a position on these bills that we have in Sacramento. And that's all I have.
Thank you, your advisor. Uh, I'd also like to comment on the groundbreaking for the jail last week. I thought it was a great, great, uh, occasion, something we've been looking forward to for a long time. I want to thank Sheriff Boudreau for getting up and saying a few words and, and bringing everybody up to speed on what the sheriff's department is doing. Milt Stowe from the City of Porterville and of course Linda Penner from the Department of Corrections, all did a great job. And of course, the staffers that gave me the right paperwork, so I looked almost illiterate up there in front of people because I was EMC, so it was a great deal. And also I'd like to thank Tom Gwynn, you know, we were out at the, uh, we had kind of a little walk-through the day before and somebody, we were talking about the stage and the backs, the backdrop and everything. And I said, "Well, at the fair this year, we brought in some hay and put some plants and stuff on it." So we get out there, behold, Tom Gwynn brings all this hay in, has the plants and everything, beautiful backdrop. It just really added to the whole deal. So thanks to, to Tom and his operation and his farming operation that does such a great job for the sheriff. And also like to thank Fire Chief Norman for his updates. You know, I had a couple of fires over my area yesterday and it's kind of neat to get those updates so we know exactly who was involved and where the fires were exactly, uh, put out. We had them on both sides of Porterville. We had one behind Seneca Heights and one out on the Tulley River, so thank you, Charlie, for bringing us up to speed on all that too. And that's all I have this morning. Yes?
One, a couple that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
One was that I wanted to thank our, our county team. We have submitted our application to the state of California to request and receive up to seventy-five percent of the cost of taking these trees down that are in danger of falling on our roads and that, that has been approved. The next step, we've also gone up and actually marked some timber that's within, just in the right of way, uh, up in the mountain areas there. And we now will need to go to the next step of going out to an RFP to, to get timber followers to come in and, and take these trees down, so making progress there. And the one other thing I wanted to mention was, just to highlight the emergency nature of the situation, Tuolumne County has offered up their entire reserve, two point five, which of course are a small county, two point five million dollars that they're putting on the line to, to, to meet the match for, um, receiving these funds from the state of California. And they know that they will run out of money long before they run out of trees that they're going to have to take down, so just to, just to put that in perspective. Thanks.
Are they still taking five hundred trees a day down?
As far as I know, they're still knocking down five hundred trees a day on Sequoia, but they are limited, they are using fire crews and so now the fire crews are being redirected in different ways. So I asked that question yesterday and what they are doing, they are doing contracting out and then they're expecting fire crews to come and go. So when they're not on a fire, they will come back and continue to knock down trees, but we need to keep as much pressure as we can on the Forest Service.
Okay, I will move on to item number two. We're going to present a proclamation to adopt the month of June two thousand sixteen as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And Bob Patel, the official chair at the two sixteen Tulare County Kings Walk of End of Alzheimer's, will be accompanied by some of his, uh, walkers, so come forward. Okay, Tulare County is proclaiming June two thousand sixteen Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Tulare County. Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia, causing problems with memory, thinking, behavior. Symptoms develop slowly and progressively get worse over time, becoming severe enough to interfere with daily tasks. Alzheimer's is not a normal part of aging. The greatest risk factor is increasing age and the majority of people with Alzheimer's are sixty-five and older. Boy, I've got a, I've got a lot of problems with that. Alzheimer's is progressive disease and those diagnosed with the disease live an average of eight years after symptoms become noticeable to others. Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and there are more than five million Americans living with the disease. Everyone is at risk to develop Alzheimer's or some other form of dementia. Alzheimer's has no current cure, but symptomatic treatments are available that can temporarily slow the progress of the dementia and improve the quality of life for those with Alzheimer's and their caregivers. Research and efforts are ongoing to find a cure. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June two thousand sixteen as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Tulare County and call upon the citizens to take the opportunity to join the global conversation with Alzheimer's disease, the brain, and other dementias. Signed by Supervisor Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Phil Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Guinness. Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. Yeah, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, my name is Melinda McCowen and I'm a Tulare County resident and a volunteer for the Alzheimer's Association of Northern California, which provides a wide variety of care and support services to families. On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, I want to thank you for this proclamation and share some basic facts about Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's is a fatal neurological disease that kills nerve cells and tissue in the brain affecting an individual's ability to remember, think, and plan. As the disease advances, the brain shrinks dramatically due to cell death. Worldwide, forty-seven million individuals are living with Alzheimer's disease and this number is projected to rise to seventy-six million in the next fifteen years. Alzheimer's is the most expensive disease in America and will bankrupt the nation if we don't change the course of this disease. Supervisors, I have some brochures and posters with me here and would be grateful if you would share these with your constituents. Thank you for your support.
Okay, now we'll move to item number three. Going to present a proclamation to adopt the resolution proclaiming the day of June fifteenth, two thousand sixteen as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Tulare County. And Bethany Barube is here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Mr. Spada, Council. My name is Bethany Barube. I'm the Tulare County Public Guardian and it is my pleasure to be here today on behalf of Adult Services and Adult Protective Services for HHSA. The reports of abuse in Tulare County for elder abuse have more than doubled in the last five years. And despite the reports of abuse increasing, we know that elder abuse is still widely underreported. So that is one of the reasons that I'm here today on behalf of APS and Adult Services to ask this board to declare June fifteenth as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. It is our hope that we will raise awareness and increase the reports of abuse. Thank you.
I want everybody to know that this bruise on my, uh, my head here was not elder abuse, it was my weed eater flipped the rocket. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay, proclaiming June fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Tulare County. In fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen, Tulare County Adult Protective Services received more than seventeen hundred and thirty-two reports of abuse against seniors and dependent adults. It is estimated that a few as one in twenty-three elder abuse cases are actually reported. Financial exploitation is the fastest growing category of abuse and only one in forty-four are reported. In almost ninety percent of elder abuse cases, the pro, pro, the perpetrator in this family is a family member. And two-thirds of the, uh, perpetrators are adult children and spouses. Seniors and dependent adults are our friends, neighbors, parents, grandparents, and loved ones. And it is imperative that we provide a safe community by reporting known or suspected instances of abuse. It is our shared responsibility to ensure all our seniors and dependent adults receive the support and protection they deserve in Tulare County. Therefore be it resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim June fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Tulare County and call upon the citizens, public, private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to join them in this observance. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worthley, and Mike Guinness. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do believe this is an action item.
Yes, it is.
Move for approval a second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number four. Presentation on the Tulare County Library's Summer Reading Program.
Good morning, Chairman, Innis, the Board, Mr. Spada and Council. I'm very proud to introduce some staff today who will give you a presentation on our wonderful summer reading program where we emphasize how important reading is over the summer for our children, our teens, our tweens, and our adults, so, and our employees. So, um, first, I want to introduce you to my staff here. Faith Arredondo, she is our manager, one of our managers in Visalia. And then Veronica Casanova, she's our librarian at the branch in Exeter, so here you go.
Hi, first of all, thank you so much for your interest in our summer reading programs. They're...
They use the microphone.
So I want to thank you first of all for your interest in our summer reading programs. They are of vital importance to our, our communities and your constituents. And like I said, like she said, my name is Veronica Casanova and I am an external librarian and this is Faith Arredondo. She is our librarian in Visalia. So I'm going to go ahead and give you a quick overview on what we're, we're going to be talking about today. I'm going to tell you about why summer reading is important. And Faith is going to go ahead and tell you about our children, teen, tween, and adult summer reading programs. And I'm going to go ahead and tell you about our employee summer reading and touch on two thousand... And I'm going to go ahead and tell you about our employee summer reading and touch on 2015 summer reading that we had. So why is summer reading programs important? There's three main reasons why we decided they are important. There's many more. There's something called the summer slide, and that's the tendency for students, especially those from low-income families, to lose some achievement gains they made during the previous school year. A Dominican University report showed that children can lose up to two months of their reading gains that they made throughout the school year. And our summer reading program, they help fill those gaps. Number two is that it provides a haven and a community for readers. So in many branches, our branch managers coordinate the programs, but it's really the community that makes the difference, and they are the ones that really help us put on the program. For example, in Strathmore last year, elementary school principals came to the library to read. In Springville, we had a business who actually donated money for an extra presenter. We also had in Exeter, our city mayor, she opened up the programs. So they're of vital importance to communities. Number three is that summer reading acts as a valuable outreach tool for libraries. We're always looking for outreach opportunities throughout the year, but this is especially important to get the word out about summer reading. This year, in Ivanhoe, I know that our branch manager there, she went out to the schools and spoke to school assemblies. We had, in Lindsay, we had our branch manager go out to the Friday farmer's market and speak to people there, and really use flyers and utilize everything, all our media team, to tell more people about our summer reading programs. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Faith, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about our other programs.
So this year, we went with the Illinois State Library iRead program, which was Read for the Win. It's kind of a gaming thing. The big colorful Read for the Win is what we're using for children and for our county reading program. The Get in the Game in the Middle is a modification of what the Illinois State had, which was Get in the Game and Read. The teens in Visalia kind of didn't like that. They just wanted to keep it kind of vague and say Get in the Game, whether it's coming to programs where they do gaming or reading or whatever. And Read for the Win, Every Reader is a Winner is the adult program that I think is running in just three of our branches. And the one at the bottom is, what Veronica's going to talk about, the county employee summer reading program, which just launched yesterday. So this year, we did something vastly different than we have done in the past. All branches in all of Tulare County are having the same program. We are focusing more on the reading to combat that summer slide. In the years past, most of the branches that were in Visalia had just focused on the programs, which is great. It gets kids in, but they weren't really focused on their reading logs and getting these kids to read. So it's the same reading program for all the branches and the same prizes. So what we want to do for the kids is for every five days they read, they can come in and get a prize. Whatever a family decides, that's up to them. I've had some people say, oh, we're going to read for 20 minutes a day. And I'm like, whatever, that's fine. I had a guardian tell me she wanted her grandchildren to read an hour a day, and that was the goal. I said, whatever, that's great. Whatever you want to decide is good with us, as long as they're reading. And so some of the kids don't want to sign up, and I'm like, come on, we're bribing you to read. Just sign up. And they're like, okay. So just a note, we started taking signups last week. In Visalia alone, we took up 300 signups for children in just about four hours. Dinuba had 50. I don't know how many you had.
We had a crowd in the morning. It was wonderful, really was. And we got about 38, which is very good for our branch.
So it's very popular. So we're really excited that everyone's going to do that. So for most of the branches, there are weekly events. There's crafts at all the branches except Visalia. You'll see why once we get to that slide, to see how many people we have show up at our programs. So we're really excited. We're really excited to be focused on reading, that everyone has the same prizes, so they can't pick and choose, which some people have done in the past. So this will be great. So the tween program, which is targeted a little bit older than the children's program, which is ages three to nine, this one only takes place in Visalia for now. It's for ages 10, 11, and 12. It's a little bit more competitive. They have, we have limited prizes. So for every 100 pages they read, they get a point. Whatever they read is fine. Like I said, we're trying to keep it simple. We just want kids to read. We don't care if they read graphic novels. We actually encourage that. So whatever they can, they can read. And we're mostly just focusing on reading because we've done programs in the past, and we haven't had a big turnout. But we do have at least 500 tweens sign up every summer. So if they want to focus on reading, we're more than happy to do that. So this is completely supported by our friends, which is how we can get some of the better prizes, because the friends provide us with funds, and we have gift cards that we give away. But the higher up you go, like, the better the prize, like, the smaller amount of kids that can get it. And we base everything off of statistics from the previous year. So we're trying to get everyone, but still trying to make it competitive. So first, we'll see how it goes. Everyone can start checking if there are prizes tomorrow. So the tween program, there's a full program in Visalia and Exeter, where they read a certain amount of, we have different tiers. Visalia has a little bit more than Dinuba, because Dinuba's a little bit smaller than we are. And in Dinuba and Woodlake, we're doing kind of a general program. So if teens do come in and want to read, they can read for a grand prize, which is gift cards to Walmart and Dinuba, because they have a Walmart there, and Target in Woodlake. And whatever else I can get my hands on during the summer, I send out to them. I'm like, here, give them books, give them this, give them that. In Exeter and Visalia, it's very competitive. They have to read five books or 15 graphic novels to get a prize, and it just goes up and up. So, but you can't combine the two. In Visalia, we're also doing a blackout bingo card, which is what the teens in Visalia wanted to do. They wanted an opportunity to read whatever I told them to on this bingo card. And if they read it all, the first three teens get a Samsung Galaxy 4, which is a little tiny one. It's what the Nooks are at Barnes &amp; Noble. So they can get a tablet. A lot of these kids that are aiming for it so far don't have computers or internet at home, so they're hoping to take this with them to college. And we're also doing movies and gaming, which kicks off this week. In Exeter, they're just focusing on reading this year, because they don't have a lot of kids coming to the event. And most everything that was planned for the teens, including some of the stuff in Exeter, was run through the Visalia Teen Advisory Group, which they're really active. On the adult program, it takes place in Visalia, Exeter, and Dinuba. They earn book bucks and raffle tickets in Visalia. There's craft, trivia, speakers, another bingo reading, and movies in Visalia. There's a book club, another bingo, reading, yoga, and cooking in Exeter. And in Dinuba, there's just a book club and coloring. And now, we're going to go talk about the employee program.
This is the first year that we're actually putting on our employee county reading program. I have to say the response is pretty good so far. Within the first day, we did have about, I would say, 197 people register, which is a really good number. So far, we've had about 350. And it's great, because we have interest from the employees asking us about summer reading programs for teens and for tweens and for children. So not only are we letting people know that we have something for them, but we're also informing them of the services that we provide at the library. And that's part of the reason why, you're going to see here, how we put together our program. The program runs for six weeks. It's from June 13 to July 22. Some of the themes, we have a weekly theme, and some include book-to-movie, online resources, our Olympic trivia, Thirce Center, Guess What Book Character I Am, and library branches. If you notice, three of them are kind of, are fun, and three of the themes are more informational to let people know about our library. Weekly emails are sent out with a vested reading list and a survey centered around our weekly theme. And participants who complete the survey are entered to win a weekly prize. We have three winners, three weekly winners, and what they receive are a tote with friends' book bucks, a bookmark, and informational library materials, and also three books. If they do complete four out of the six surveys, then they get a chance to win an Amazon fire. And now on to summer reading 2015. The theme for last year was Every Hero Has a Story. So you're going to see that throughout the different pictures. What it means for us, what a hero is, is either it's a community hero, such as a police officer or a firefighter, a city mayor, anything in that region, or just a superhero, which is a little more approachable for kids, Batman, Superman, Spider-Man. If you look at the top left-hand corner, that is in Alpa, where they did superhero masks. And the bottom left-hand corner, that is where, in Early Mart, where they did superhero toilet paper roll craft. And that top right-hand corner, that's Dinuba. So just to give you a little idea of just how busy that branch is. And that was whenever they did have an E&amp;M performer. And the bottom right-hand corner, that's in Exeter. That's the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. They came out and presented, and they're really good at what they do, very personable, and the kids love looking at the dogs. So the top left-hand corner, that is in Ivanhoe, and that's the Rieta Ranch Girls. They came out to show their rope tricks. On the very bottom left-hand corner, that's Orocy, and that's the crowd that they get. And that was also during an E&amp;M performer. And then, right in the middle, in the bottom, you're going to see, that is in our Springville branch, where our magician came out to perform. You're going to see him throughout the different slides here, different pictures. Now, in the bottom right-hand corner, that is the Strathmore branch, where the community heroes, the ambulance came out and presented. And that top right-hand corner, that is in Lindsay, and that's one of the bigger crowds that they do get there in Lindsay. And that was for an E&amp;M performer. So that huge, that cute, very cute, a little girl there, that was in Woodlake. Like I said, it was a superhero theme. So what they did the last day, they did a contest, a costume contest. And that was one of the participants there. On the very top corner, that's one of the crowds that they do get for the Three Rivers branch, and that is our magician, the Tim Show. And on the bottom, the bottom right-hand corner, that is in, I believe, Tipton. Yeah, that is in Tipton, and they did the bowling. So tells you a little bit about how popular our programs are, and how much they like to attend. So I'll go ahead and finish up Visalia.
So this is Visalia. That top is a panoramic view. I took of our first program last summer from all the way over. That's about 300 to 400 people. That's E&amp;M reptile. We will have that crowd on Thursday, if you want to come see the insanity. He's a very popular performer. He goes to all of our branches, and people have been asking us all week, when's he coming? When's he coming? We're like, next week, next week. So that's our children's program. That's what Thursdays look like for us. The bottom corner with the fire truck, that was Fire Safety Day that the adult program put on, and they had people of all ages, but I really liked the picture of the fire truck. And then the last little picture is just a snippet of the superhero bash that we did at the end of the summer. Kids who checked in at least three times got invited to this party, where we had movies. We showed the Avengers movie. We had crafts, which is what you're seeing there. We also had a photo booth, which was really popular. We had trivia. There's, I did the trivia myself, and there was a costume contest, but the trivia was so cute. I asked really easy questions and hard questions, all about superheroes. And I asked one question about Big Hero Six. And this one kid raises his hand really fast. He goes, but I want my brother to answer. And the kid was about two. So he runs up to me at the desk, and we're like nose to nose, and he named every single character from Big Hero Six. It was adorable and so cute. So that's what our summer reading program looks like last year. So this is kind of what the numbers are. So like I said, we didn't quite have a number of branches reporting, so these are all estimates. So we had 1,300 children attend programs in eight branches, 150 six teens attend programs in six branches, 377 adults attend programs in seven branches. So it's really good. We're hoping to get everyone to report numbers this year, which is kind of why we streamlined it. Visalia has some pretty big numbers. We had over 4,000 kids attend programs, 143 teens attend programs, and 334 adults attend our programs in Visalia. So we're really busy. So that's our summer reading program. That's what we do every year. We're hoping that this year is a bit bigger. We hope to, you know, tell you all the numbers, how our focus on reading went next year. And we couldn't do this without, of course, the support of our staff at Tulare County Library. They do so much that without any recognition they work, especially the people in the branches, where they're doing everything by themselves, especially in the small places like Ivanhoe and Three Rivers and Springville and Strathmore and Tipton and Alpa. They're all doing it themselves. So we really could not do it without them. And then, I planned most of the programs that we did this year, because one of our coworkers went out on maternity leave in May. So she kind of let us do it. And Veronica has done the employee program, and Darla has given us our support. But we really couldn't do anything without the support of our friends group. And in Visalia, Three Rivers, Lindsay, and Exeter, Dinuba, they all support us and just, they're really great. I was talking to them last week. We're like, whatever you need, just do it. Just let us know. We have plenty of money left for you. And then our other local community groups that help us throughout the county, all we have.
We also want to thank you guys for your support in this. We really couldn't do that without the county behind us. And I also want to encourage each and every one of you to sign up for the employee summer reading program if you haven't already. It's going to be a lot of fun, and it really will help us to encourage others to read, knowing that you guys are reading as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Darla, a quick question. Does reading the agenda for an 80-item Board of Supervisors meeting count for the reading or not?
Yes, all reading counts.
All right, good. Just a couple of things that I wanted to add. I know that I had a conversation with you about what we could do to maybe partner with some different entities to continue to bring kids in during the summer to read more. That summer slide is so scary, and I just spoke at a graduation or a senior breakfast for Tulare Union, and I bet there were probably 400 students in the room, and probably, I would say, maybe 40 of them were actually listening to what I was saying and not looking at their cellphone. And I know I'm not the most entertaining speaker, but it's just insane the way that the youth in today's culture are just relying so much on their phones. I'm sure that's contributing to the slide. But anyways, one of the things we had talked about at the Health Advisory Committee was the immense amount of resources different food agencies have in the state of California to provide summer meals for youth. Any way that we can partner to maybe bring youth to the libraries, even for summer lunches or summer meals, there's funding for it. There's a lot of schools that are participating, but in some areas, the schools are not participating, but we do have a library branch. And if we can get the kids to come into the library for food, hopefully they'll read a book, and maybe we can slow the slide a little bit by doing something like that.
In Visalia, we have partnered with Food Link again this year, and we will be serving, we actually started serving lunches Tuesday through Friday last week from 12:30 to 1:30.
Great.
We're, after speaking with you, we're going to spend this next year planning to try to work with some of our more rural communities, so we can start doing that maybe in some of those locations. It's a little late in the season to get this organized, so that is our goal. With our staff turnover, we sort of put, actually adding one or two this year on hold until next year. So our plan is to get out there, talk to Food Link, get our branches involved in this program, because it's really critical. We served almost 1,400 lunches last year in Visalia alone. So can you imagine what we can do if we can at least add a library in almost every single region here? I think it would make a big difference.
Reading is so important for these kids, especially during the summer, but adding the nutrition piece, if we can do that too, meets another very significant need. And so I'm glad you're working towards that. And anything that we, as the board, can help do to facilitate that, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was so happy to hear you said, let them read anything they want to read. I flashed back to my child at 12, 13, and 14 years old. You younger folks won't know about this, but I was reading Harold Robbins. You younger folks won't know about this, but I was reading Harold Robbins novels at that age, and they weren't intended for youth at that age, but my mother said, whatever you want to read, you know, I want you to read. And so I would read literally hundreds and hundreds of pages a week. And I don't really advocate, you know, letting eleven and twelve-year-olds read Harold Robbins novels now, but for me, it worked. It, it, it kept me.
Are you trying to get credit for past pages read?
If we can. But I, I really appreciated that, you know, because we, I had a brother, older brother who would only read comic books. He could not read until he was in his mid-teens, he started reading comic books, and from comic books, he became an avid reader. So, you know, let them read whatever they want to read. You need to let them read. That'll, that'll pique their interest, and then hopefully they'll catch on from there.
Like you said, it's really important that a parent be the decider on what you read as a child. And your mom did a good job. My mom did the same thing. I was reading, you know, some things that probably wouldn't have been good for a ten-year-old as well, but it helped me read more and want to read more. So, and comic books, if it wasn't for graphic novels, my son wouldn't be the reader he is today, because he went through a stage where he wouldn't read anything but. And now I, I can't even keep up with him. So I, I really think that a reading for its own sake is true. It, it encourages it. It helps you learn, helps you learn beyond reading, like math and science. So, and finding the right book is the key sometimes for a kid. You know, my son, it was Aragon, so dragons and sword fighting and all that stuff, but it was this thick, and our mom couldn't, a librarian mom couldn't be so proud except seeing her son read that book when he was only reading books this thick. So thank you. Anybody else have anything?
For me, for me at age twelve, it was Valley of the Dolls.
I read that one too.
This is just gonna be too much information. And we won't talk about your magazine selections. We are looking forward to the opening of the library in London and setting a date. And I know that when I had mentioned this to the state librarian, he had hoped to be able to participate. So as soon as we have a date, I'm gonna, we'll shoot an email out to him. Hopefully, we'll be able to get him to attend, and, and that's a great event for that community. And I certainly concur with Supervisor Vanderpool that the ability to perhaps collaborate with other entities to try to bring more to the library would be great. And one thing I look forward to in London particularly, where we have no school site there, is that there is very limited public access there. So the library will provide a real vehicle by which we can do a lot of different types of programming, and so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheedah?
I'm very impressed with the number of participants that you have in the program. I wasn't quite aware that you had that many kids showing up. But Supervisor Vanderpool brought up the subject of, does our reading of our agenda qualify? I just wanted to show you, that's our agenda package this week. And so even though you've become an elected official, doesn't mean you, you, well, you still have the obligation to read. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and then I always go back to my grammar school days. I was always the guy trying to figure out how to do a book report without reading the book. And I never got by. The teacher would always catch me because I didn't make it. But no, it's very important, and, and it's very important that you do know how to read. This week was, was one of those that is just mind-boggling. I had to sit down in two different set of sessions and read this agenda because I got so tired of reading. But no, it's, it's good. I think it's great, and people, that's the number-one skill. You need to know how to read, and then you need to know how to comprehend what you read and keep that knowledge. So thank you for a great presentation.
I, I thought Supervisor Vanderpool might say you predated Cliff Notes, but I guess he didn't.
Is it, is this a action item?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Okay, let's move on to item number five, public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on issues pertaining to Tulare County but not on our agenda, may do so at this time.
Hi, supervisors, County Council and C O, Allison Pierce, Program Administrator for the Step Up Program. I have with me today Francisco Medina. He is your newest intern. He started yesterday. He is a recent, he recently completed the hashtag lead program that took place over the course of the school year with Visalia. And he just graduated El Diamante High School, and will be going to U C Berkeley this fall. So wanted to introduce him and have him say a few words.
Good morning to everybody here. Thank you for having me, and I'm very excited to learn a little bit more about the community and how it works, and I'm even more excited to meet the people who call the shots here. It's an honor for me to be here, and thank you for having me here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and welcome. Appreciate having you.
Good morning. My name is John Hobbs. I live at seven fifty-five North Terrace Park Street in the city of Tulare. And I'm not here to talk about anything that pertains to District Two. But over the course of, and this is, this is personal, so indulge me, folks. Over the course of the last twenty years that I've lived in this community, I've had an opportunity to work very closely with various members of the Board of Supervisors. And that's been a privilege and, and an honor, I might say. But today, due to the results of a recent election, I'm, I'd feel called upon to, to comment on my work with one particular supervisor, that being Mr. Cox. It has been a privilege, a personal privilege for me to work with him over the course of his terms of service on this board. And I, I just want to say briefly that Phil, you're a stand-up guy. You have always been forthright and a man of strong conviction, and I'm gonna miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Chair, I did not pay for that.
Okay, anyone else wanting to approach the board this morning during public comment?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Spencer Neil Pascal, and I reside at two zero one five North Auburn Court in the city of Visalia, nine three two nine two. I'm not here to talk about anything on the agenda item today directly, although indirectly, I know that you guys are assigning some appointing items, appointing people to commissions and committees that advise the board. And I'm simply here to introduce myself. I submitted an application for consideration of appointment to various open memberships on committees and commissions that serve the Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to put a name with the face, and I noticed you guys are starting to fill those positions, so I wanted to put my name in the hat soon. And that's pretty much all I have. I want to wish everybody a Happy Father's Day, and if anybody's a golf fan, I have a good buddy in the U S Open, so go Brendan Steele.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment. We will move to consent calendar. Item seventy-one is off, to put off to a later date. We have items twenty-three, twenty-seven, fifty-eight, and sixty-six for separate consideration. So we will start with item number twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, can I also add to that list as well? I would like to, on item thirty-eight, we don't need to remove it, but that is dealing with the contract with Horizon Health. I would like to have an update to the board about that contract, particularly how Horizon has been working out in the jails. I know that was a very big decision for the county to make that move, so at some point in the future, I'd like to have an update brought to the board related to that. And then I don't remember if it was an item that you had listed. Item sixty-two is a, an agreement with the High Speed Rail Authority. I would just like that considered in, in a public forum, not necessarily on the consent calendar.
Do you want it removed?
Yeah, just for private, or for.
No, moved off to another date?
Separate consideration. No, no, just pull that for consideration. And then there's also the, I'm not sure exactly the item number, but it is related to the hero program. It's fifty-eight. Are you pulling that all already?
Fifty-eight, pulled.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, let's start with item number twenty-three then. Oh, well, we can do the balance. You want to do the balance of the consent calendar? Move approval of the balance. Consent calendar. Moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Sheedah. Cast your votes. The balance is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item number twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, I asked to have twenty-three polled, just so that I could vote in the negative on that one.
Their membership in the National Association of Counties, okay? Vote to approve.
Second, I want to express something on that item, though. Tulare County is not paying for the membership.
No. CSAC is.
Naco. CSAC is making that payment. It's no net cost to the county.
Okay, we got four in favor with Supervisor Cox voting no. Glad for that clarification on that, Supervisor Sheedah. Okay, let's move to item number twenty-seven.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Hess. This is consideration of a construction management contract with Vanner for our SB ten twenty-two project, and it's about a three million dollar contract, and it'll last through all of construction, so we happy to answer any questions.
Chair, I had this polled, wanted the board to consider this contract. This is the next new building. It's Sequoia Field, and my concerns are, in light of the recent reports we've received from the sheriff and news that's come forward about the additional staffing cost of this new jail that we were, were told would be zero, you know, a few years ago, are now amounting to millions of dollars. So I would like to see this sent back to staff and have them address the staffing needs for this facility, since we haven't spent this money yet. I think it's the perfect time to take a quick step back, send it back to staff for a few weeks, and then let the sheriff's staff address our staffing issues that we may have with this. So I, I'm very concerned with the additional staffing cost. And I'm not, you know, recommending that we deny this. I'm recommending that we put this off for a few.
Let me just ask one question. How far out are we on the building of this jail? Are we another two or three years out?
So it'd be about another two years of design and preparation, and then construction about two years from now. And then it's a two-year construction project.
So you're looking at four years before you have to talk about, well, actually, three years before you have to start talking staffing?
The issue is, we spend our money first. So we're spending our match money first, which is the way we did the South County facility. We've spent our match upfront, and then the state pays later. So my concern is, is this is all our money. This is three, this is three million dollars out of our pocket that I think we need to reconsider, looking and having the staffing cost for this future facility in hand before we pull the trigger to spend this three million dollars. This is money that could be used for something else in the county if, if, if we were to look at the staffing numbers and say, we need to reconsider this.
What, what's the timeframe related to expiration of state match with our local match?
They've been pretty flexible with us in relation to the funding going up and down. So the next board meeting would be where we'd want to do our establishment, which is in September. So that's kind of been our tentative working deadline between now and September, beginning that establishment process.
This wouldn't delay anything then.
So we don't jeopardize state funding if this were to be delayed to just potentially look at the staffing costs?
That's correct. We would not jeopardize the funding.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I can appreciate Supervisor Cox's concern. However, I, I feel like this, this particular project, where we're talking about the demolition of several very old substandard buildings and a replacement of those buildings, is something I feel we need to go forward with. My concern is related to Mr. Cox's concern about staffing levels, and I look at that from, I think we need to look at that from a more comprehensive way. As we're looking today, we're talking about how to utilize the, the building that we've acquired on Acres, and whether or not the sheriff should be going there. And I, I want to see a comprehensive plan of the sheriff's operations, because I think we need to be looking at the overall picture and not just piecemealing it. And so I think, but as for this, I think we need to go forward with this particular aspect of it, because we need these facilities regardless, given the fact that the structures we now have out there are, need to be demolished and replaced.
We, I, I agree, we need these facilities now, and I also agree with the approach that we are taking on this ten twenty-two project, in that it's really an alternative means to incarceration and more of a programmatic approach. And we don't really have that capacity right now in the county currently, so I do think we need to move forward expeditiously with this item. And with that, I would move for approval.
Want to comment any?
Yes, I do. I think Supervisor Cox brings up a ve- very valid point. We have the state of California trying to dump more people out on the street, and as we know with state funding of, of programs, like they've been funding the additional workload on our county jail system, that they disappear after a while. The money disappears. So I think we need to take a comprehensive look on the whole system to see what we can actually fund. I remember being in a conference, and someone was talking about the cost of government, and the cheapest thing that the government does, the cost, is building the building. The most expensive part is staffing that building. So I would be in favor of putting this off for a couple of weeks until we have a comprehensive view of what the sheriff's department's needs and how we can finance those needs in the future.
Well, this has the potential to be this board's pre-trial facility. We, we were not here for what happened, neither were they, not, not in the decision-making position, but I really think this has potential to be a disaster. And we need to look at the entire plan, the sheriff's entire plan. I know he has a plan. We need to be a part of that. We need to look at the overall plan. So I totally agree with Supervisor Worthy that we need to not piecemeal this, but this becomes a piecemeal piece if we don't step back and take a look at the entire transition plan going from one building to another. We're already more than replacing those Sequoia Field beds with the South County facility. This building would be a year or two behind that. So taking a step back for a few weeks is not going to jeopardize our funding. It's not going to hurt this project one bit at all.
And let, let me just make one, one other comment. I don't think that the sheriff is really going to be able to give us an accurate picture of what the staffing needs are going to be like at this facility. And we also can't project what's, what money is going to be available four years from now to staff the facility. There may be additional funds that come from the state of California. They may be for a limited period of time, but we just, there, there's a lot of unknowns that are going to make putting this off not really giving, not really giving us a clear picture into the future, and that's a fear that I have.
Well, and I might just say, I, I don't think two weeks is an adequate time to reflect on the overall comprehensive nature of what I'm talking about, but I still see this as being something we need to do, just given the fact that we are providing services now. Our, our, our facilities are decrepit, and they are in terrible condition. They need to be replaced. We went through an entire process of, of applying for these funds, had the money reduced, were able to go back, get the money restored. So I, I believe we need to go forward with this aspect of it, but it doesn't, doesn't take away from your comments, Mr. Cox, about the comprehensive approach we need to look at in the sheriff's operations. And there are other options. I mean, one of the things that I will speak to later on is, I think we need to look at closing down the main jail. I mean, to me, if that's, if we're talking about moving our, our headquarters out to Acres Way, and we're talking about building a new South County facility, maybe this is the time to look at closing down that jail, because that's how you are going to be able to redirect people. As long as you have all these facilities open, then you're talking additional bodies. If you start closing facilities, now you can redirect bodies. But again, that's premature for us to make that kind of a call here today. It's premature for the sheriff to make that call, and I don't think two weeks gives us the information that we're talking about.
If you'll remember, though, that was the plan. The plan was to close Main Jail, move those employees to Porterville. That was the plan, so.
I don't recall that being the plan. That might have been an option.
That, that was said right where Mr. Hess is standing by the, at, by that time, the sheriff's command staff.
Well, be that as it may, I, I think we need to move forward with this particular aspect of it, because I think we've got to replace these buildings, and I don't see that. To me, you know, we can talk about the pre-trial facility, was that a failure or success? Well, ultimately, it was a success, because it was built, and then when we needed Well, ultimately, it was a success, because it was built, and then when we needed the facilities, we had facilities built and half, halfway paid for it. We paid for all of that by way out of our own pocket, without, we're going to be kind of funding from the outside for that, are very little. So I, I don't have a problem moving forward with this particular project, because I think it needs to, it needs to happen, and there are still other options of what to do with other facilities, including the Main Jail, and their operations. But this needs to happen, because the facilities out there need to go away, and the way they're going to go away is by, by, by doing this project.
Hey, John, I just got a question. Now, we are tearing these facilities down, is this, is this still come on as a new facility? Where we don't have to fully staff it to start out with, we can ramp it up slowly?
So in regards to the operational side of things, I think Sheriff's Office can probably comment on that a little more thoroughly than I can, but yes, it is demolishing some of the existing substandard structures and replacing it with a new state-of-the-art facility as well, you know, and similar to our South County project.
Because I know the South County, we don't have to fully mend it, we can start it up pod by pod. And if this is the same story with this new building, I think we'd be foolish not to, to go ahead and build it. I mean, we don't have to, if we don't have to staff it.
Mr. Chair, if you look at the report that was written by Captain Sigley, that's not the case. It, it shows the first year cost being five million dollars, and I think we've yet to identify where that five million dollars is going to come from. So there, we already have a report in front of us showing a staged opening of, of that Porterville facility, and my concern becomes right, right up front, the additional funding that is required, that we've not already identified to provide funding for that staffing. So I'm just saying, there's, there's concerns here that we need to step back and take an overall look that includes moving the sheriff from where they're at now over to the Acres building. I think we need to look at it as one big move instead of a piece at a time. So, you know, I'm agreeing with what Supervisor Worthy is saying, except moving forward with this right now, it's not going to hurt if we, if we step back for a few weeks or thirty days and, and have those discussions with the sheriff and see if we can't get a, a potential staffing report like we already got for Porterville on this new facility.
Supervisor Sheeda?
By reading the agenda item, I think we're probably somewhat missing the point. This is an, an agreement with the Vanner Construction Management Company to provide construction and management services and design for construction of a facility in Sequoia Field, of this, in the Sequoia Field area. We may change as a board as to the extent of the size of that facility, because this is only a contract hiring a consultant and not giving... I think we have time to give the consultant direction when we have more information, so...
It's just, my, my point, it's all general fund money. This is part of our ca, our shared cost, this is all of our money, we're not spending state money for this.
Well, that's, that's correct, but we're not spending a darn dime until we start contracting them to look at something specific. This is a, a contract that goes till, what is it here?
Twenty-one, February twenty-one.
About five years.
Yeah, twenty-one. So I think we can do both. You can let the contract, but the scope of the work is to be determined. Because I, I stand with Supervisor Cox. We need to know what it's going to cost us and what we can afford, and the scope of the work may change. But this is just approving a contract for the consulting.
I'm just trying to stop the bleeding while we can and take a look.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the item, and I would ask that the sheriff come to, back to the board within the next, say, month, and bring us a, a prospective report on the staffing needs for this facility.
Well, and if I, again, I think, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I would second the motion to approve it, but to me, I think we need to have a comprehensive look, and it's not just this facility.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's the whole operation going forward. We, we have, we're making major decisions that are, there are opportunities, I think they need to be made, but on the operational side of thing, you know, you guys are absolutely correct. I mean, at the end of the day, there's this much money that goes to the sheriff. He's going to have to operate on that, on the, on that budget. That's the only thing we can do, is say, here's money, how do you, how are you going to operate the facilities that you have? And so I, I think that we, this is going to be a longer-term process, I think. I don't think you can have him come back in thirty days and say, here it is. I, but I think we do need to have this discussion, and I'm especially interested in that as it pertains to the Acres property, because we're making a huge decision, you know, if we're going to go with the recommendation of, of sending sheriff and fire over there, then, you know, we're talking some major dollars there because of changing, putting in the kind of staffing, the, the hardware and so forth that are going to be needed to, to move our, what's our?
Dispatch.
Dispatch over there and so forth. We're talking a lot of money, so we need to, we need to, you know, this needs to be part of a comprehensive plan.
Well, I've identified three million dollars of potential funding to remodel that building here, and I, I think we're spinning it the wrong way.
Well, but I agree with Supervisor Sheeda that, that we're not, we don't have to spend a dime of this right now. Letting the contract doesn't mean we have to go forward until we have the comprehensive plan if we don't, if we don't choose to. But I, I think we should go ahead and take action.
That's a good message to send, is let's don't spend this money until we do have that transitional plan from the sheriff. I think that's a great idea.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Worthy. Cast your votes. Vote is four to one with Supervisor Cox voting no. Thank you. Okay. Move to item number thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight was just a request for the, for an update, a presentation at a later date.
Okay, then let's move to item number fifty-eight.
Mr. Chair, I've, I had this polled. We did meet with the folks that had proposed this program. One of the items in the agenda, though, on page two, it actually shows up on page three of our iPad document, but it's stamped page two at the bottom, under "Payment Obligation Stays With The Property." My concern is that this becomes a super lien, in that it goes with the property, and it's my understanding, it looks like Mr. Taylor may be here to address the realtor's issues, but the, the concern I have is, is this lien carrying forward with the property not being have to paid off when the home either refinances or is sold.
And, and I just want to add to what Supervisor Cox said. I wanted to have this pulled just after speaking with Brett yesterday for a little bit, just because when you really look at this, it, it has some real lack of transparency aspects to it, and I think we have some capabilities at a local level in the adoption of the program to shore up some of those weaknesses. So that's why I think that, not to not approve it, just to postpone it maybe for a, a later discussion is what I would suggest, but I know Brett is here to speak as well, and it's also, we can take public comment as well.
Morning, Board of Supervisors. Brett Taylor with the Tulare County Association of Realtors. We do support the Pace and Hero programs out there, there, there's a good goal. You know, they want to help improve the energy efficiencies of, of homes, and so we support that goal, but there are some issues that, that we see and that we've seen across the state of California through these programs, and it's primarily two. And the first one was already brought up, was the fact that it creates a super lien status. If you were to hire a contractor to put the same new windows, or a new AC, or solar panels on your home, you pay the contractor, the deal's done. When you participate in one of the Pace or Hero programs, the county essentially turns into the debt collector. Those, those fees are placed on the tax roll, and in the real estate industry, we call those a super lien. And that's a scary term for a lot of the lenders out there. Fannie and Freddie will not loan on a home that has one of these super liens on it, because if the taxes aren't paid, then the Fannie and Freddie, or the mortgage company would not get paid. And so it has created a lot of issues where first-time home buyers or, or new home buyers are not able to purchase homes because they do not qualify to receive these types of, of mortgages. And so that's the first issue that we're seeing, is that a lot of people are submitting an offer, they're really excited about getting a home, come to find out their lender will not lend on it. The, the other issue that we're having is full disclosure on these, because the, the pace assessments are not technically loans, but voluntary assessments secured by real property and are not required to provide standardized disclosures, and that's an issue. In, in our industry, full disclosures is the most important thing. Whether you're buying or selling a home, we want everything out in the open so that you know what you're getting when you're purchasing your property. And we have had a, a lot of instances where people are purchasing a property for, let's just say, two hundred thousand dollars, and the taxes are typically one percent plus whatever little small fees are attached, and so they're expecting a two thousand dollar tax bill for each year, and they're getting tax bills that are three, four, five, seven thousand dollars. It's because they didn't know that there was one of these Pace or Hero programs attached to their, their home, and they're, they owe that money. It, it can't be, you know, it can't disappear, they owe that money for whatever the terms of the agreement are. And so there is currently a bill, it's AB twenty-six ninety-three, that is out there that will help clear up some of these issues, that will, will make it so it's required to fully disclose these types of assessments or super liens during the transaction. It has passed the Assembly floor with a seventy-five to zero vote, and it's currently in the, in the State Senate waiting for their approval. And so we would ask that you kind of postpone this program until we see what the state does, because we would really like to have full disclosure, that's extremely important to us. So thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. My, my understanding was this, this was brought up some time ago, Michael, you've probably commented on this too, that, and at the time, initially, it was thought to be only applied to, like, commercial properties. There was an issue about homeowners because of the mortgage companies being basically kind of bound into something that they didn't agree to. So they lent money on a house, and now all of a sudden, somebody comes along and basically puts a second, but it put them in a higher position. So then there was some legislation passed or whatever to, apparently they satisfied the mortgage companies. I mean, that's why it came back before us, is that, is that, is that still an issue?
If I, if I may, just to address that, yes, the, the county originally did commercial-only projects. A year ago, on June second last year, they expand, you, your board expanded to, on the California First program, expanded to include residential projects. There's still an issue about marketability of, of these loans, because they are, the, the, the loan or the, the lien will stay with the property. I don't, I don't know about the full disclosure, I would think that, obviously, that that should be disclosed, and I don't know that there's an issue with not applying that to, to this, but...
I can't imagine a title insurance report that wouldn't reflect this.
Yeah.
If someone's gotten this, I mean, I would think it would show up on a title insurance report.
I would think it would have to, and they can be paid off at any time.
But I could see that.
Yeah, it affects that. There, there's been a number of steps. The governor had put together a ten mil, ten million dollar bond to try to protect first mortgages, the, the... But the, the entirety of the project has not, or the program has not been cleared up completely yet. There hasn't been any issues yet with that. I tech with the tax collector, we, we have a pro, because the Hero program is already in existence in, in our cities. So our, our tax collector is already doing assessments for properties within the city of Isaya, Tulare, Porterville, Woodlake, I believe, as well, and others are considering or in the, in the process. There's approximately, out of all the Pace programs that the county has, there's about sixty properties that have had, taken advantage of Pace. That's as of August of two thousand and fifteen. The assessments, I believe, are assessed once a year at the beginning of August, so I don't know what's occurred from last August to, to date, but as of last August, there was about sixty throughout the entire county of, there was three or four different programs, majority of it being Hero and California First.
I think there's, I think there's an additional, would, would you like to make comment?
If I can, a question to Mike. Can this be modified where in our program we require that disclosure?
I, I believe we have a representative from Pace right here.
Right, and I would love to address all the concerns. My name is Eve Perez, I'm Director of Municipal Development for the Hero Pace Program, and we, we're the largest provider of Pace financing in the nation, and we have worked very closely with the realtor community on the concerns about lien position. The lien position has been addressed in two different ways. Number one, the governor established a loan loss reserve program in early two thousand and fourteen in the amount of ten million dollars to backstop any Pace assessments that default. To date, there have been no defaults, so our program has been operating since two thousand and eleven. Sonoma County actually had the first successful Pace program, which still operates to date. They have not had any issues or had to go to the governor's loan loss reserve program. The other way that we have addressed the lien position concern is subordination. So last year, we began offering a subordination option for not only refis but sales as well, and that's been very successful. So we have successfully completed over five hundred subordinations to date, so the banks are accepting it, and it has allowed property owners to keep the Pace assessment on the property at the time of refi or to successfully transfer it to the new owner upon sale, provided that that buyer does want to assume the balance. In terms of disclosures, we have really taken the lead for Pace financing to establish standards for consumer protections, including disclosures, important disclosures in the documents. So our documents require not only that there's language in there to help property owners understand that they may need to pay off the Pace assessment, that it is tied to the property taxes, which is the mechanism for repayment, but we require them to initial that. So we are trying to establish industry standards for consumer protections, making sure that property owners are aware of the repayment mechanism, the fact that it may need to be paid off. Even though we're offering subordination, some buyers don't want to assume the balance, and that's, you know, that definitely can happen, and we want to make sure property owners are aware of that upfront. Keeping in mind, any other form of financing, whether it's a second line of credit, even an unsecured option, they place equipment lien on the property, so at the time of sale, they have to pay off those options. So this would look no different, and there is no prepayment penalty. Unfortunately, so we're doing a lot of work with the realtor community to engage with them. We set up a special department called Hero Property Advisors to handhold property owners who are in the process of selling their home or refinancing. We actually reach out, we are checking the MLS listings to see any properties that have a Hero Pace assessment to reach out to that property owner, as well as the realtor, the mortgagie, title company. We work with everyone who's involved in that process to make sure that they understand what the options are and help them through the process. But when I say unfortunately, unfortunately, we haven't been able to educate every single realtor group out there. We are working at the highest level with the Association, California Association of Realtors, and we have conducted over two hundred educational seminars last year alone with the realtor community, because we want to help them understand what the Pace assessment is, how it functions, the fact that we do subordinate, because that's new for a lot of them, and as well as our disclosures. As far as AB twenty-six ninety-three, we're at the table for that, because it's important to us to protect our industry and make sure that not only our program, but every other Pace program is adhering to certain standards for protecting consumers. So we want that bill to go through, we want those consumer protections to be memorialized and be required by every Pace program.
But is there a standard interest rate that's charged along with this?
No, every program is different, so it depends on the funding that they secure. So just as an example, our financing is between six point seven five percent and eight point three five percent, depending on the term. But it's not based on, so every property owner who wants a five-year term would, and qualifies for a program, would get the six point seven five. So it doesn't vary between that, it's just fixed, and it's fixed for the term, unlike a second or a line of credit, which basically, which I will say, takes four to six weeks to get qualified. So for property owners who have system failure, and that's when most of these property owners are moving forward with the project, is that when your AC goes out, your furnace goes out, they're calling a contractor and finding out what their financing options are, second or a line of credit is just not an option at that point. No one wants to wait four to six weeks to replace an important system in their property. With Pace financing, they do get immediate approval, and the rate is fixed for a longer term. They can finance up to twenty years, making projects very affordable. With a second or a line of credit, it's usually seven to ten years, and it's a variable rate. So there's a lot of reasons why Pace financing has been very successful. Our program alone, again, we're the largest provider, we have financed out one point five billion in projects. Since two thousand and eleven, we're in four hundred and twenty-one jurisdictions. It's a huge program for a reason. The governor stands behind it, the president stands behind it, because this program creates jobs, reduces greenhouse gas emissions, reduces water, and most importantly, helps property owners to lower their utility bill, which is why it's tied to the property taxes, because it's deemed that anytime you're improving the environment, it is a public good. good, which is why it ended up being part of the Streets and Highways Code. It was amended to reflect environmental protection.
The real reason for this program is for people who would not otherwise be qualified to finance their own solar systems or whatever. Is that?
No, not at all. So, it's just another avenue for property owners to qualify. So, not everyone qualifies for PACE financing with our program. We have a 65% approval rate. So, keeping in mind with a second or a line of credits, about 40%, so that just allows that many more property owners to move forward with the project.
But, what determines who moves forward and who gets rejected?
So, the underwriting. So, we do look at, they have a minimum equity requirement, we look at property tax payment history, mortgage payment history, involuntary liens, bankruptcy foreclosure. So, there's a lot of elements that we look at to ensure that a property owner does truly qualify and can handle the financing.
So, basically, it's like getting a commercial loan?
Exactly.
Yes, same criteria.
Uh huh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If we have a bill going through the legislature now to clarify some of the points that are brought up by the Board of Realtors, and spending over 20 years in the commercial real estate business, I can understand how something can impede a sale or make a property I don't have any issue with delaying the approval of this until we see the final outcome of the bill.
Again, I would say that we are already taking action to address the concerns of the lien position through the loan, the governor's loan loss reserve and subordination. And again, the HERO program has been the leader in consumer protections. We now have more consumer protections in our program than any other financing option available in the marketplace today. And again, we have a seat at the table for 2693 to make sure that our consumer protections, which we're leading, are memorialized in that legislation.
Well, I personally think it's a good program, but I want to make sure that our real estate industry is on board with the program and the legislation that you are supporting. So, I think it's a lot easier for us to approve it if the legislation goes through and the governor signs it.
Right, well, I...
If I can also, real quick, by your statement, it sounded like you've not met with our local real estate folks.
No, we have not.
So, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would motion to continue this for 30 days alone in the time to have those meetings, and then we'd monitor AB 2693.
Can I also mention that there's also, you have another PACE program that's on agenda, item number 57? So, we're both PACE programs, and I'm just curious why HERO was pulled, but not the Golden State Financing Authority program?
Want us to reconsider and pull that one, too?
Yeah. If there...
You'll need motions, just to remind the board. And a second on Mr. Cox's motion.
I will second Supervisor Cox's motion on 58.
Put it off for 30 days?
On 58 specifically, yes.
Okay. I'm going to cast your votes on that one. Put it off for 30 days. Votes unanimous on that. 57, you want to do the same with 57?
No one's mentioned.
I think you have another public comment.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. My name's Elaine Trevino, and I'm the consultant for Y-Green, the other PACE provider. Yes, we are item 57. We're a little different than HERO, but the previous speaker is correct. HERO has been out the gate long before Y-Green has. Y-Green's structured a little different because of a piece of legislation that was passed in 2011, SB 555. So, we're more of a Melrose structure. And I do appreciate the comments made by the gentleman from the real estate industry, representing the real estate industry. I can tell you that the lien is shown in the preliminary title report. By law, it has to be. For some realtors, it's new, and so there is, to the previous speaker, I believe Eve's point, that there's training taking place all throughout the state by all PACE providers, because as she indicated, the industry is new, and there's definitely opportunities for a win-win in this relationship. The AB 2693 was actually renamed, once it passed Assembly and went over to the Senate side. It was renamed a consumer protection bill, for the mere reason that I can, I can say that Y-Green adheres to all the consumer protections already in its current practices. So, that, I do want to assure you that that is the case. The bill probably will not be out of Senate until late August, and our PACE providers actually want to be active throughout the summer, because that's usually when system failures happen in the residential side. Y-Green's a little different, because we finance not just residential, commercial, but agriculture, including pumps, but not necessarily the casing, but everything that makes a pump energy efficient, derrys, all other agricultural operations that qualify for energy-efficient savings. So, we differ a little, but we are in the same pool in terms of oversight. There is a loan loss reserve. Us, like HERO, Y-Green, like HERO, has no defaults to the state. And the reason why is we notify lenders, once homeowners or property owners or businesses qualify for the financing, there's a whole set of processes that go into play to make sure the notifications are provided to those that have any sort of financial stake in that property. So, I do urge you to move forward on approving both today, only because I, we've taken a long time to try to get into the Central Valley to operate. I do understand your concern about AB 2693, and I could commit on behalf of Y-Green to give you weekly, bi-monthly updates on that bill, or for the realtors to be vocal on that bill if they feel that the association hasn't been vocal enough at the state level. I can assure you, the realtors are at the table and taking lead on this, because out of the concerns that have been expressed. But also that, from a statewide perspective, the AB 32 requirements that are put on counties and cities, it's critical to have these type of programs in place. HERO is out the gate, so like they said, they're way ahead of a lot of the other competitors that are trying to catch up in being able to show jobs created, energy efficiencies, gallons of water saved. And even though the drought restrictions have been lifted in many areas, it's still very critical that we have these mechanisms in place to help save water, both on the industrial and residential side. So, with that, I'll end my comments or answer any questions you have about the Y-Green program, and thank you for your consideration.
As I considered the motion that was made by Supervisor Cox, it really, although Supervisor Sheed talked about that particular statute, but I think what Supervisor Cox was saying is giving, gives time for these outfits to speak to the realtors and perhaps bring them on board, notwithstanding the legislation, which is winding its way through the legislature. So, I think from a point of consistency, it might be good to do the same thing with this, this one, but, but again, not necessarily tied to the, to the bill, tied more to your outreach to their local real estate realtors, so that they'll be on, you know, have them show up here as your advocates and not as your opponents, might be the ideal sort of the situation.
Supervisor Wordley is correct, that was my intent.
Do you need to already pass this on consent calendar, so we'll have to, we'll have to pull it back off?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we rescind our approval of item 57 and continue that to the same time, to a 30-day time extension as the...
Okay. Let Supervisor Cox... Second by Supervisor Wordley, cast your votes.
Could I ask one question? Who would be the best contact with the local realtors that you would like us to contact? This gentleman here? Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Please bear with us, we only have 79 items on this agenda.
We pulled 62 already? We already handled 62?
No, 62 has not been handled yet, but it was pulled for separate consideration.
Okay, so we'll do 62 right now.
Okay, item 62 is requesting approval of an agreement with the High-Speed Rail Authority in the amount of $185,000. If you'll remember, your board approved an agreement with the High-Speed Rail Authority back in November, actually was a batch of agreements. The major agreement approved, it was a cooperative agreement with the High-Speed Rail Authority to construct approximately $13 million in improvements to our county roadway network adjacent to the high-speed rail alignment. At that time, we also approved, or you also approved, an agreement in the amount of $150,000 approximately to reimburse the county for the time we spent coordinating our review of the plans and specifications for the work that they're going to perform. This agreement is to reimburse the county for the time that we spend out at the site making sure that the project gets built in accordance with our specifications and requirements. So, that's what that is.
Great, I just wanted to, I don't like having, I feel like so much of what happens with the High-Speed Rail Authority happens where no one really has any opportunity to comment, and it's done behind closed doors, so I'd like to make it a very public item in Tulare County at least, because it is going through our community. So, if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment about this, but if not, I would move for approval for the county agreement.
It was gone over, and we really reap the benefits from this, and it was putting them off, putting another extra overpass and different things.
Yeah, no, no, I totally get it, I just don't like seeing it on the consent calendar, that was my only point.
Motion, a second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Ben. Okay, now we'll move on to item 66. I understand we've got a PowerPoint with this item. Stormwater grant?
Good morning again, Chairman and Board members. Ben Reese, Centrum Director, Resource Management Agency. Want to take the opportunity to provide you with a brief presentation for item number 66, which is a request to approve the submittal of a stormwater grant application for our Cottonwood Creek project adjacent to the juvenile detention facility. Just an overview of the presentation, I'll go over some of the background of the funding source, description of the project, and the background to this project, go over some of the project benefits, summarize the recommended actions, and then, of course, available for comments or questions. So, Proposition 1 authorized $7.5 billion in state Prop 1 bonds. It made available $200 million for stormwater management projects. The grant would provide up to 50% reimbursement for projects, which means it would require a 50% local match. One of the keys to the projects is that they must have multiple benefits, with an emphasis in groundwater recharge and water quality. But additionally, points are awarded for habitat restoration, recreational opportunities, and flood control. Awards will be made available in October of this year, and construction funds will be available in 2017. Additionally, projects that receive these funds must be part of a stormwater resources plan. So, staff is currently working with a consultant, preparing a stormwater resources plan that will be completed before the end of this calendar year and submitted to the state for approval to make the project eligible for funding. This project was originally identified by the Flood Control Commission and approved by your board as a priority flood control project. We've since then proceeded with the design of this project, the plans are substantially complete, we are moving forward towards construction, and then we identified this funding source. So, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to leverage our local flood control funds to leverage state funding for this project, so that we can save some of our funds for future projects. The project will reestablish, reestablish the natural drainage pattern of Cottonwood Creek north of the juvenile detention facility. It will construct berms, weirs, and gate structures to direct stormwater into collection areas for groundwater recharge. The project is estimated at $2 million, which means it would require $1 million in flood control funds, and hopefully will be awarded $1 million in state Prop 1 funds. This is just an aerial view, an aerial map of the project. The existing alignment of Cottonwood Creek is shown here. You can see it comes south, makes a 90-degree bend, goes west, then another 90-degree bend right in here, and then goes under Road 108. The project will restore the creek to its historic alignment, and there isn't really any science behind that. We reviewed previous aerial photographs to determine the original or pre-existing alignment of Cottonwood Creek. What we've done to make this project competitive for the grant is to, we modified it a bit. It was originally designed as a flood control project, which it will still do that. The intent of the project is to protect the juvenile detention facility from flood events. What we've done, though, is we've introduced some recharge areas. The first one being located right in here at the east end of the project. That will capture the initial flows that come into the creek. The second recharge area is right here, our existing sand and gravel pit. What we'll do is we'll design this berm to allow flows to enter recharge area number two when they reach a certain level, and then when they get a little bit higher, increasing flows, they'll overflow into this overflow area here to the north of the project. We believe that this will make the project competitive for the grant funding source. So, some of the project benefits, the project will provide for 30 acres of recharge basins and 100 acres of overland flooding area. It's consistent with the future goals of sustainability for drainage basins. With our drought, this project will recharge our groundwater table for nearby users and improve water quality through dilution of local contaminants. It will restore the creek to its natural pre-existing alignment. And importantly, of course, it will also provide flood protection for our... So, I'd like to thank our Board of Supervisors, CAO, and the Flood Control Commission for your support and direction on this important project. We're hopeful that we can receive some state funding to help this project. And so, in summary, our recommendations are to approve submittal of a Proposition 1 grant in the amount of $2 million, and authorize and direct the CAO to act on the county's behalf in all matters pertaining to this application.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a great project, we had previously approved it, and we had tried to get funding to the Earlham, the upper kings, and they did not have additional, enough funding to help be able to do that. They did approve this project as an approvable project, had there been the funding available. So, I want to thank that the staff are looking for other means of trying to fund this project and help it move forward and leverage our dollars. So, it's a great project, and there's a lot of opportunities for additional recharge above and beyond this. I think about the, on the other side of the street by the sheriff's operation, we have a pretty good-sized ponding basin right there, which could be made available on an emergency basis necessary, just by pumps and so forth. But anyway, great project, I think, and I hope we're successful with it, and I would be glad to move approval.
Hey, moved by Supervisor Wordley, second by Supervisor Sheed. Votes unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Ben, for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've made it through the consent calendar now.
It's almost a consent calendar.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 73, request from the Board of Supervisors to consider and modify as needed, improve the grand jury's final report entitled "Homeless, Hopeless, and Helpless."
So, good morning, Board, CAO, County Council. My name is Julieta Martinez, Board Representative with the County Board of Supervisors, and this morning I bring to you, just to draft some responses for our grand jury final report. The 2015-16 grand jury final report includes one report that requests responses from your board. Draft responses were included with your agenda item. For all reports, respondents must address each finding stating either agreement or disagreement. Each response must address each recommendation stating if it will be implemented or not, and of course, if further analysis is needed, it must be completed within six months. I will briefly review the draft responses for your consideration citing the recommended determinations. Please let me know if you have any questions or modifications to the draft. There is one for your consideration today entitled "Homeless, Hopeless, and Helpless", which includes two findings and one recommendation. The draft response finds agreement with finding one and two, and the responses are as follows. Finding one states, "The Tulare County Grand Jury found Cal Works employees to be helpful and knowledgeable about the resources that are available to homeless individuals in Tulare County." Response, "The Board of Supervisors agrees with this finding." Finding two states, "Individuals who are not mentally ill or chemically dependent and without children are not eligible for any available housing programs." Response, "The Board of Supervisors agrees with this finding as it pertains to housing services available to individuals and families..." as it pertains to housing services available to individuals and families served by the Health and Human Service Agency." Regarding the recommendation for this report, recommendation one states that Tulare County needs to establish programs to assist all homeless citizens, including those who are childless, mentally competent, and non-chemically dependent. Response, "This recommendation requires further analysis. The Board of Supervisors has consulted with the County Administrative Office, who will direct staff and other agencies to research the feasibility of such programs that may assist the homeless population in Tulare County." It's requested that you approve the draft response with any changes noted and any clerical corrections and authorize the Chairman to sign the response letters. With that, if you have any questions or comments?
We do work with the Kings Tulare County Homeless Coalition. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
And that doesn't need to be mentioned in here that we're already working on that?
We can add that on there if you'd like us to.
I know we give ourselves time to address that, but I know we're already on that coalition that are addressing these specific issues.
We can make a note and add that under the response to a recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other additions?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Cox.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Cox makes the motion and doesn't vote.
Vote unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Get that light touch.
Okay, let's move on to item number 74, Advance Major R Local Transportation Program Funds. Ben?
Good morning, Chairman. Back again. The item before you today is requesting approval for Advanced Local Programs, Measure R Fund, to the amount of $5 million. To construct, to resurface Avenue 280 and Avenue 144, some priority farm-to-market routes in Tulare County. Just an overview of the presentation. I'll go over our strategic management system and how this project is another example of the system in action. I'll cover our three primary discretionary road fund revenues that are used to maintain our 3,000 miles of roadways throughout the county. Talk about the collaborative effort that we undertook with our CAO's office, but also with TCAG staff to identify these farm-to-market routes and describe the projects. Go over the acknowledgements, summarize the request, and available for any comments or questions. You've heard a lot about the strategic management system as implemented by our CAO at RMA during his time there and as he's implementing here countywide. I think this is another example of the system in action. What we've done in collaboration with his office and with TCAG staff is to identify in a proactive way, under a team-based approach, some priority farm-to-market routes with the goal of improving the transportation infrastructure for the dairy industry, which is the number-one industry in Tulare County. The next few slides cover some of our discretionary revenues that are received through our road fund for rehabilitation and maintenance of our roadways. The LTF, or Local Transportation Fund, is generated through state retail sales tax. We are estimating that we'll receive approximately $4.7 million through this revenue source for this upcoming fiscal year. Now, historically, most of these funds have gone on the roads maintenance side of the equation. As you can see here in our proposed distribution of allocation, is we're proposing to distribute 3.1 million or 65% of those funds towards the transit side of the equation, and approximately 35% or $1.6 million on the roads maintenance side of the equation. And the reason for that is we're planning for the construction of a transit maintenance and operations facility, so this funding is required for that project. Highway user tax account is the second source of discretionary revenues to our road fund. It's generated through gas tax revenue, and as you're aware, this revenue source has been declining over the last several years. Last year, we had an estimated decline of approximately $4 million. For this upcoming year, we expect a further decline of approximately $1 million. So, we're forecasting revenue of approximately $10 million for this upcoming year. The challenge we have is that with declining revenues, the cost to repair our roads keeps increasing. So, that's a challenge that we'll have to face here in the future. The third major discretionary revenue source is through Measure R, specifically the local programs component. We're conservatively estimating that we'll receive approximately $5.2 million in this coming fiscal year. This revenue source is used to fund transportation-related projects throughout the county and it's designed to allow, provide flexibility to the local agencies, such as the different cities, in our case, the county, to use these funds for projects that we feel are necessary. Back in January, we presented to you a program for improvements throughout unincorporated communities. Our proposal is to continue investing in our communities. Approximately 50% of these funds are $2.6 million. And as you can see in the chart, we're proposing to slice up 20% of that pie and dedicate that to farm-to-market routes. Working with TCAG staff and leadership, the proposal before you today is to take that $1 million over the next five years, advance it to this coming fiscal year, so we can construct the project in the spring. We feel that that's an efficient and best use of Measure R funds. And another piece of the pie is the 30%. What we've, what our purpose of that is, is to leave that $1.6 million for projects that may come up, to give us the flexibility to address any projects that may come up on a year-to-year basis.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I just want to, I'll throw in the comment right now related to that on this slide. I'm very supportive of this concept. Think it's a great idea and we need to do it. I think it's going to benefit not only the farm-to-market traffic, but it'll also benefit your general commuter traffic, because in the unincorporated areas, those are heavily traveled roads. But I'm glad to see that we are leaving that discretionary money available, because I want to make sure that we don't strip ourselves of our financial abilities to do road repair on the arterial routes that are necessary to get traffic to these farm-to-market roads in the unincorporated areas, because those are, in many cases, very bad. So, thanks. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you pointing that out.
So, this table just summarizes the previous three slides. We're forecasting approximately $20 million in revenues from those three revenue sources. Our in-house road maintenance crews, historically, it's about $12 million. In this case, we're showing $1.6 million, just to keep that operation going, to keep their maintenance activities, purchase the materials that they use to fix our roads and the equipment that they need. We talked about the $3.1 million that we're going to transfer or we're going to use for our transit operations and maintenance facility. And then there's that $1.6 million that'll give us some flexibility in the future. So, it's a little bit under 10%. And then the $2.6 million committed to our community, unincorporated communities, and the $1 million for the next five years, which the proposal is to advance that money to construct the proposed improvements. Project identification, as I mentioned previously, it was really a team-based approach. Our staff worked hand-in-hand with staff from TCAG and our CAO's office to identify a farm-to-market network. The map that I show here identifies the farm-to-market network that we identified in the red. And it was identified through outreach. TCAG staff conducted outreach with the ag industry, also based on some of the experience and knowledge of some of the staff that we have at RMA that have been around for a while, and we were able to identify the network. Additionally, there was a minimum criteria used to define what a farm-to-market route was, and that was a minimum of 300 truck trips per day. A statistical analysis was performed by TCAG staff to essentially prioritize the farm-to-market routes to see which ones would be the best use of Measure R funding. Into that analysis, the key component was goods movements or truck volumes, but also considered were the existing pavement condition, safety information, ag value, or another way of measuring economic development. And then there was a subjective portion that allowed RMA staff to provide some input on some of the more priority routes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so this just identifies the routes, not the routes that will be worked on, because I see Riggin, Plaza Drive 80. I see projects that are already completed on this. So, this is just, this particular one just identifies those farm-to-market roads.
This map just identifies the network of roads throughout the county. And so, TCAG staff took all that data, prepared a relatively sophisticated spreadsheet with some formulas in it, and the results of that are, it identified some of the routes that you mentioned Supervisor Cox, as high priority routes. But of course, those have already been improved, so we wouldn't want to work on those projects at this time. But some of the, two of the routes that rose to the surface were Avenue 144 in southern Tulare County and Avenue 280 in kind of central Tulare County. And the proposal is to use the $5 million advance to resurface Avenue 280 for approximately five miles, starting at the Kings Tulare County line and going east to just short of the State Route 99 interchange, which is scheduled to be replaced here in six years or so. And Avenue 144 would start at State Route 99 near Tipton and extend west for approximately seven miles. So, we would set up our construction documents such that the contractor would keep resurfacing on Avenue 44 for as long as the funding would allow to expand, to fully expand the funding. And I would point out here on this map that these are high priority dairy routes. We show the milk processing plants here just north of Goshen and here just north of Pixley. There's the previous map that I showed. I don't know if you can tell, but TCAG did a nice job of showing like the dairy industry here with cows or the citrus industry here with oranges. So, these routes here primarily serve the dairy industry and they're major routes to our dairy processing facilities. Again, these are major collectors serving the dairy industry, which is the number-one ag industry in Tulare County, valued at over $2.5 billion in 2014. These particular routes serve milk processing facilities, which represent 123 dairies, which process more than 15.8 million pounds of milk per day, valued at over $1.1 billion. We believe that advancing the money would be the best use of the Measure R, or the most efficient use, because we can resurface more miles of road today than we will be able to, you know, five years from now, just due to inflation. Additionally, we believe that by, when you have a larger project and you have a similar project that's smaller in size, you get economies of scale on the larger projects. So, you can surface more roads, more miles of roadway for the larger projects. And this table here just kind of shows a brief description of Avenue 280 and Avenue 144. They serve over 700 truck trips per day. For Avenue 144, actually, item number 59 on today's agenda was approval of a reimbursement agreement. So, Avenue 144 is already programmed to receive over $1 million in federal funding for its design and construction. By supplementing this project with Measure R funds, we can stretch those Measure R funds a little bit further.
Chair, one quick question if I can, Ben. And these are looking at the size of these projects. These are projects that will be bid out and not done by county crews, correct?
Correct. These would be bid out. So, with that, the request is that the Board of Supervisors approve an advance of $5 million in Measure R Local Transportation Program Funds for improvements to farm-to-market roads. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued support for RMA and our projects, our CAO for his involvement and direction on this project, TCAG staff, I think Derek is here today. Derek brought a lot of enthusiasm.
And don't forget Teddy Smalley's in the back, too.
Ted's back there.
Oh, there he is. Ted's here today. They were instrumental in preparing the analysis and coming up with the farm-to-market network and their leadership also to push this concept forward and to make this funding available to Tulare County. And our RMA staff, which provided a lot of the data that was used in the analysis. And it was really a team approach and it was a fun project to work on, so.
Supervisor Wordley, you got a question?
Ben, a great, great project. I appreciate the strategic thinking and went into this. My question really has, I think, or the answer, I just wanted to ask it. When this is done, the project itself, this road will be built to a standard that's designed specifically to handle the truck traffic that's going to be on it?
That's correct, yeah.
Because I mean, I know sometimes that we have roads out there that, well, throughout the county that were not designed for the truck traffic, which they now bear, which is part of the issues we have. So, obviously, we want to spend the appropriate amount of dollars to bring the roads up to a standard that will hold up for a number of years. So, I knew that was the answer, but I felt I should ask it. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Every year, we go back to Washington DC to lobby for farm-to-market roads. And that is on, TCAG goes back and the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council also lobbies for farm-to-market roads. This is finally a map that we can say to the people when we lobby them, we've identified our farm-to-market roads to keep the heavy trucks from deteriorating or roads that aren't up to the standards to carry those trucks. So, I really commend the staff at RMA and TCAG for putting this together. I wondered if Mr. Smalley had any comments on this farm-to-market project?
Well, Mr. Smalley's making his way up here. Mr. Chairman, just in the battle days of earmarks, we used to actually get earmark funds from the federal government for farm-to-market roads. I think one year we got like 13 or 16 million dollars. So, unfortunately, those have gone away. The earmarks have gone away. So, we've tried to promote the idea that Supervisor, she's talking about, of a program. The program being one, and Supervisor Vanderpool's been a champion of that, that you identify roads like this, you get a lot of truck traffic, and then you make it a nationwide project. And hopefully, we would be eligible to qualify for a significant amount because of the type of agricultural use that we have.
Ted Smalley, Tulare County Association of Government. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come. First of all, I want to thank RMA. This has been great to work on. Some of you, Pete, thank you for your patience, I'm sorry Supervisor Vanderpool, for your patience as we got this together. But this is meant to be an example to the nation and to other areas, so that this is something that can be replicated in other areas. And then in turn, hopefully, as we move forward on future transportation bills, that there's a carve-out of the national transportation funding that could have these same criteria. They're not difficult, per se. They make common sense. The average person can understand them. They're not caught up in technical gobbledygook, so you can see it. Truck traffic, it's, and it's pretty common sense. There are safety issues. So, I think it's a great example and we hope to continue to partner and keep our valuable industry going.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm glad that we saw a District 3 project raised to the top.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let me begin, Ben, by thanking you and your agency for bringing this matter forward. This is a very strategic project, and you may have mentioned that the dairy industry, one that contributes over $3 billion in economic value to this county, is the leading dairy industry or the leading industry in Tulare County. It is the leading industry in the state of California and in the nation. So, Tulare County in terms of its dairy industry truly is symbolic of being a leader with regard to contributing a great deal of value to this county. What I really want to say and compliment you, as well as TCAG, for your tremendous input here, is that you strategically identified two key roads that feed into two creameries that produce over $1 billion. That's strategic. And I want to compliment you for the endgame analysis, because by improving those roads, you are contributing to the efficiency of the transfer of product, raw product, to those creameries, so they can produce more and thus benefit Tulare County. So, thank you very much, Ted. You've been tremendous here and I want to say that this is a good project for Tulare County. Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation, Ben.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further questions, comments, or concerns, I would like to move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Cox.
Thank you.
Ochinanimous, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number 75. Before I start this item, I would like to read this little statement. We're now calling item 75, RMA requests approval of a general plan initiation, initiation of 14003. The request is to authorize the applicant to file a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from AP 079190017, from agricultural to rural residential. The action of the board today will not be the final decision regarding this project. This is only the beginning of the project, and allows the county to study whether a general plan amendment is appropriate. It does not mean the project will be approved, and the applicant will be paying the cost for the county to study this request. Now we will start item number 75.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman, Board Members, CAO Spada and Mr. Sims, Mike Washington, Tulare County RMA. Today before your, for your consideration is a general plan initiation, GPI 14003. To summarize, this is a request to authorize the applicants to file an application for a general plan amendment. The applicants are Simon, Dutton, and Qualls. Location is north of Visalia, just east of Patterson Track, approximately a mile north of the St. John's River, outside of the Visalia sphere of influence and outside of its UDB. However, it is within the Visalia urban area boundary. The project description, this, this general plan amendment is for a little over seven acre portion of an approximately 28 acre parcel consisting of the following. To change the land use designation from agriculture to rural residential, and change the zone from AE 40 to RA 87 on that seven acre portion. If approved, this will allow the applicants to process a tentative parcel map to divide the parcel as follows, into three, two and a half, basically two and almost a half acre residential lots, and then keeping the one remaining, a little over 20 acre parcel to remain with agriculture land designation and with agricultural zoning still applied. Here's a map of the area. You can see the site is outside of the sphere, which is the purple line, and outside of the urban development boundary, which is the mustard color line. However, it is within the blue line, which is the county adopted Visalia urban area boundary. You can see that there's a number of parcels surrounding it. If you, if you look at the aerial, you can see to the, to the west of the property, there's approximately, let's see if this arrow works, there's approximately 15, two and a half acre parcels here. On this side, there's 13 parcels that are under three acres. And then up here, you're looking at another 17 parcels that are under two and a half acres. So you're looking at about 45 parcels that are approximately the same size. To the south, there is, there is a large, I believe this is one parcel, 60 acre parcel to the south, it's in ag, ag production as well. This is where we're, the, the blue highlight on the site, that's, that's where we're changing, where it is proposed to change the designation from ag to rural residential along that strip. And then the remaining part of the site would remain in agriculture as it is today. This is a close-up of what the proposed parcel map would look like if, if, if this goes forward and is approved. Then they would submit a parcel map, and this is what they're considering. Three additional parcels, the blue parcels on top and to, to the right, or to the left, rather, those are existing home site parcels. The road, access road is already in place, it's not, it's not a new road, it's already there. And then the remaining parcel four would remain agriculture and, and 20 acre parcel. So looking at the consistency with the general plan and the city-county MOU, the planning framework policy is that the future land entitlements within county-adopted city-urban area boundaries, that no general plan amendment would be required, be considered within the urban area boundaries unless appropriate under the requirements of the RVLP. Additionally, small standalone residential projects of four or fewer lots do not need to meet city standards, but shall respect all city utility and street master plans and for setbacks. A preliminary RVLP analysis resulted in a score of 10. If the number of points accumulated is 11 or less, the parcel may be considered for non-agricultural zoning. Cooperation between the county and the city in, on this project. There was telephone conversations back in January, as well as the consultation letter was sent. The, the city didn't have any comment, we didn't receive a comment letter in. We contacted them again last week, and the, the city sent an email saying that they, that it's a mile north of the river, they have no concerns, no issues with this project at all, so they're not, they're not commenting on it. The comments and unique factors regarding this, even though this is not a public hearing, not publicly noticed as a public hearing, the, the RMA has received numerous comments, both pro and against the project. The main unique factors and comments from the public are considering the surrounding setting, rural residential versus preservation of ag land. As I said, that there's, there's approximately 45 small parcels surrounding three sides of it with a larger ag to the south. This ag zoning was put in place with the blanket zoning in 1978 that placed AE 40 over all these one, or small parcels that were already in existence, and so it's part of that blanket zoning. Water is, is another issue, of course, everything that we're looking at with concerning drought and, and overdraft situations. That would be, again, this is just for land use designation. That would be more specifically addressed during the parcel map portion of this, as, as far as they need to show quantity and quality of water supply analysis, which would be required at that time. Easement access, there's been a lot of litigation on the, on the easement. There is an existing easement there. The two concerns are the length of the easement and the width of the paved road. The length of the easement is really a non-issue, the easement is already in place, the road is already in place. County standards would require, because of the additional three parcels, the county requirements would have a wider width than, than currently. However, in many instances, there's exceptions made, and that would be part of the analysis to see whether the Public Works Department would look at, at an exception for the road width. Emergency access is another concern on, on that easement. The fire department, it's a 20-foot paved easement right now. The fire department requires, says it's, it's fine with access of that, that, that they don't need any additional turnarounds or anything, that it's, it's fine the way it, it sits today. So just, that's briefly what we're looking at, is just to start the process. Again, a reminder that, that if, if your board chooses to authorize the general plan initiation, it no way implies that the desired general plan amendment will eventually be approved. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the GPI to authorize applicant to file a general plan amendment. With that, I'm open for any questions or comments.
Questions? A quick question, and one of the letters we received here talks about a, a impact to the water table that some have already, some of the neighbors already had to, to deepen their wells. It's always been my understanding, and maybe, Mr. Washington, you can correct me, that, that a residential housing project actually uses less water than this would as farmland?
In, in environmental studies that we've done with the IRs, it's about four to one use for ag over residential.
Four times the use of ag water, one time the use for residential, please, okay, thank you. I think that would depend, too, on what they put on the property.
Absolutely, and to be clear, this hasn't been farmed in years, so there's no water being used now.
Depends on what, when they build a house, how much of the landscape and stuff they put in would determine how much water they use, yeah. Yeah, I have Alex Thompson that wants to speak to this issue. Alex?
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman, and, well, Mr. Spada and Counsel. I'm an attorney, and I am from the firm that represents the applicants for this request. And what's already been presented, I don't want to belabor the points that have been made, but I'm here because my firm's handled litigation matters for the applicants, and I just wanted to briefly touch on some of those, if, if the members of the board are going to hear comments that would not support this project. My clients, that property you saw, there were five, basically five pre-existing housing lots. Those were all done via gift deed back in the 70s. And the county had basically put their stamp of approval on those back then with a certificate of compliance that was signed. Now, these five giftly deed lot current owners and, and just former owners back in 2013 began litigation against my clients regarding easement issues. That case was settled, and part of the settlement agreement was that if there was any development, that the things that they may have put into the easement that's already there would be taken out if there is development. Some of those things include like landscaping, some fencing structures and things like that. So as far as the easement width goes, we're looking at if development happens, the full easement width of about 45 feet would be available for the project. Another issue is, we've got a situation with family members where one of the gift deed owners who currently lives there has sued my clients in an estate proceedings, and that's obviously caused some animosity between the two parties. And I just want to represent before the board that my clients are trying to approach this in a manner where we want to push through this project, and we work with RMA and make sure that things are done according to their recommendations and suggestions. And whatever personal animus that might be between the parties, we're trying to get over and trying to make sure that the project goes smoothly. And in another instance, you're going to hear about other litigation where there was another instance where there was a dispute about the land just to the east of that strip that comes, or just to the west of that strip that comes down off of Avenue 328 where my clients were sued. And they ended up prevailing in that action, and the reason why they prevailed is because they had, they owned that property, and they had the ability to use that as they wish, and they were trying to prevent, sorry, just one more second on this. They were trying to prevent unauthorized access of that property. That access that was being done to the client's property was actually causing damage to their road. And so in that litigation, my clients were able to secure their road, they prevailed in court, and even one of these five gift deed current owners, who you might hear objections from today, submitted a declaration in favor of the other side. And the end result is, that road that gives them access has been made more exclusive to them. It's prevented damage to that road. And so I just wanted to let the board know about those concerns, and I am available to answer maybe some of those concerns if, if appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
My name is Karen Johannes, and I ask permission to comment in place of my mother, Joan Fisher, who is one of the residences in that area. Is that all right to comment in place of my mother?
Fine.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't have anybody down other than the one.
Okay, well, she has a comment, a, a letter, and then a little comment about asking that this be set aside, making sure that all the people that this is affecting have a chance to respond. She wasn't notified of this, and she shared this, there has been a lot of problems with these people and putting things up in the road, kind of in an unneighborly fashion in the beginning. I'm glad to hear that it was worked out legally. But anyway, I want to go ahead, I'm sharing that because she has said that to me. I will read her letter. "My name is Joan Fisher, and I have been made aware of the zoning requests to change the property zone to the west of my property from ag use to rural residential. I am aware they have been trying to do this for some time. I am against this as it will increase the population density in this area and most certainly draw down the water level. I and several of my neighbors have already had to drill deeper wells to stay on our land. It will also increase traffic in our area. The big concern is for the water usage, septic tank density, which will, again, affect our water. I ask that this change be voted down." I don't think she understood exactly that it wasn't to that place yet, but thank you for your time. That's all her comment was.
Hey, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Nancy Dreeland. My husband, Steve, and I live just north of the proposed subdivision. We are proposed, opposed to further development in the area. We fear the, feel the preservation of farmland is vital to the economy of Tulare County. Water is a major concern. The majority of the neighbors surrounding this proposed land have already had to lower their pumps or drill new wells. The road into the proposed subdivision is about a half a mile long. There are no turnarounds for any type of vehicle to turn around, let alone large ones. And there is only one way in and out. If this proposed subdivision is passed to the next stage, we ask that it be required to meet all of the codes and specifications that the county has already set forth, i.e. the width of the road, the length of the road with turnarounds. As the property stands now, it cannot meet these specifications. We respectfully request that you deny this proposed subdivision. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. Tricia Blattler, on behalf of the Tulare County Farm Bureau. Certainly, my packet does not rival your agenda packet today, but it is one that I've been carrying around and had on my desk for over a year now. And Farm Bureau's comments today are really just that it's, it's very unfortunate that we have a situation of neighbors that have been at odds over this situation for not just a year, but it looks like a number of years. And the Farm Bureau was not party to any of the litigation or the private issues that have, have come up between these neighbors. But several of these neighbors do farm and, and do have larger parcels of land in areas around this neighborhood, and, and the Pratt family in particular farms a, a large amount and provides farm management for a large number of parcels around this area. And it, it always compels Farm Bureau to look a little deeper at what some of the underlying issues are with, with the neighbors. And, and I look at that parcel to the south, and that 60 acres that has trees on it, and, and some of the nuisances that are brought to the area when you start to further parcelize and divide acreage that is closer to those permanent crops. And those permanent crops tend to start seeing encroachment on their ability to move equipment and spray chemical protections and, and do those normal cultivation practices, cultural practices that are required to be, to be viable. In my March 2015 letter, I had commented a year ago about predictability, and how in today's highly variable climate of, of challenging business practices and not knowing what kind of water situation sigma is going to thrust this county into following, that having predictability is really important. And I guess as you look to whether you authorize the initiation towards a future general plan amendment for this area, Farm Bureau is usually commenting on these types of matters out of concern for what will be future predictability in that area for the larger farm parcels that are still attempting to compete and be farmable and have right to farm and right to access in that area. Certainly, there's already a large number of small residential units to the north, to the west, and to the east of this, you know, prescribed area. But we certainly want to weigh in and provide comment when appropriate to say that we, we are still here trying to fight for some of those other larger parcels to the south that view this as, as a threat to their viability going forward. I understand, and the Farm Bureau understands, that today will not determine whether the amendment ultimately gets approved. But in, in fear of wanting to at least provide some cautionary thoughts, we, we are concerned about this particular matter and have been, you know, approached by some of the landowners to that degree. Thank you.
Else wishing to speak to this?
My name is Rod Hobiler. I'm one of the current residents out there, and my wife was one of the children of them that were gifted to the land. that were gifted to the land. I've lived out there since about nineteen eighty-four. There's been major issues which we will not bring up, but some of the issues that have been addressed is that this land does have eighteen shares of ditch stock, which is a large amount for this amount of land. It has been farming history since it's been owned by the Qualls, it's all been in ag land. People failed to talk about the eighteen acres on the, or forty acres on the ingress road with the plums as you come in. There's also ten acres of walnuts on the same access road. There's another two acres of walnuts right on the access road too. I mean, we're surrounded by ag. Our water, which has already been addressed here, is a huge issue. Not only, every single well on there has been replaced or lowered. There's two went dry this week in ag pumps that join this property and being drilled. Water table has dropped almost twenty feet already this year, which is hard to believe. The new well drillers came out, I went dry last year, I was at a hundred and twenty-five feet when it went dry. Static water, static. The neighbor went dry with me, he just has a well drill out there, but she's not more than a thousand feet from me. The standing water's at a hundred and forty feet. We're in one of the worst water areas, I've been told, in Tulare County. Not the worst, but one of the worst. There's currently four well drillers within a quarter mile of us that are drilling wells right now. Water is a huge issue and the main one is easements. Without quoting all the county rules and regulations, they need fifty-six feet of easement, thirty-six feet of pavement. That can't be done in any way. There's ditch, ditches in the way, ditch pipelines, culverts, weirs. And the house right now currently on the corner only sits twelve foot six feet off the easement, which there's no way to widen it. It will end up in litigation, as homeowners already told me, if this is amended or in any way of variance for this, none of us want it. But it is truly in safe conditions. The radius on the corner is too small, the easement coming there has several, the approach off of three twenty-eight is too narrow. A lot of times people have the backup if a truck is coming in there or, I mean, it happens quite often. I've lived out there for over thirty years and so have a lot of the neighbors. We've had two neighbors, one of them moved after litigation, they'd had enough of this pipe, and they were the original builders out there. They'd had all this and they decided to move, they moved out of state. We have another neighbor next to me, Lieutenant Colonel Dr. Karen McKenzie, that felt she'd been threatened, I'm not going to get all the reasons why, but, and recently received a letter from attorney and she just said enough is enough. She's put her house up for sale and moving on. It looks like I'm out of time. I could go on, a lot of these issues have been addressed and there's more letters of opposition coming to the county. I have a whole packet I'll deliver tomorrow to them, and more letters. Thank you for your time.
I hope everybody understands though, we're not approving a project here today. Just opening up so they can study the project. And it may not be feasible, who knows? But we're not actually approving a project today. So I just wanted to leave it at that.
Sure, Matt, that's not even a public comment. I appreciate the county has this process in place where we require people to come before the board and get permission to apply, and the idea is really to keep people from wasting their time. In my mind, it's always been a pretty simple thing though, when you apply the real value lands plan formula. If something falls in that lower level, then they're always going to get my vote of approval to go ahead and apply. Doesn't mean they're going to be successful, but they've met that criteria. We usually rely upon the real value lands plan as being one of those primary touchstones for how we determine whether or not property's going to be allowed to be developed or not be developed. Obviously if you're in the higher numbers, it's a, it isn't going to happen. So there's no point in going forward and it's good to tell the applicant that upfront so they don't waste their time and energy and the energy of the county in pursuing it. When you're in the lower level like this one is at a ten, I will always vote for the permission to give them apply, to apply for it. There will be other issues, they have to meet all the criteria. There are a lot of off roads in these situations where not something will be successful. But the ability to apply for it is in my mind either the case of no way in hell it's going to happen, or there's a possibility it's going to happen. If it's got the possibility of it happening, I'm going to vote in favor of giving that applicant the opportunity to apply. So that's my comments.
Any other comments?
The reason I left the dais is I went after my iPad to bring up on Google Earth the neighborhood because our example that's in our package really is hard to look at. It's hard to decipher what's there. But if the staff would bring up this on Google Earth...
You know, I actually have some handouts for the board if you'd like to see them, of a Google Earth printout, if you'd like to see them.
Bring access for the property.
I will move approval of the application.
Supervisor Sheed, are you wanting to wait till you see this pulled up?
No, we've got picture right here.
Well, you know, it helps if the audience, if the people here can see this picture. You don't have Google Earth?
Address.
Somebody in the audience, please give them the address.
And all it's doing is refilling in the rest of that street.
It squares it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
So this is where we're talking. Basically the photograph shows that this property is almost surrounded by two acre, two and a half acre parcels. I think there was a point in time in the sixties, farming wasn't doing too well, and fire board supervisors authorized these ranchettes. And I don't believe we've authorized any of them in this area in the past, but that's the result of past policies that we have almost like a community sitting out there in the undeveloped, while in the unincorporated areas of county. Mr. Worley, you made a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
I second the motion.
Motion by supervisor Worley.
And again, this is not approving the project, this is approving the due diligence.
No, this is just, go ahead and do the study.
File the application.
Vote is unanimous to proceed with the study. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to item number seventy-six, report on the flood control status, proposed activities.
I suppose it's still morning here, so good morning board, chairman. Your spot on Mr. Sims. Reed Shanky with Resource Management Agency. You've heard quite a bit from RMA and my legs were getting a little bit stiff, but I'll try to be fairly quick here. You'll recall back in the fall of last year, we came to your board with a presentation discussing some of the plans and preparations we were making for the upcoming or predicted El Nino event. This is part of the feedback loop here, I'll provide a bit of a summary on what we did encounter and then talk about some of the actions that we're moving forward with this summer for future potential flooding situation. Talk a little bit about some slides on the actual precipitation that we did get, some of the effects as far as flooding and the response that RMA and other various agencies were able to undertake. And then as I say, we'll get into some of the future flood control projects. And something new that we haven't really talked about yet is a potential update to our flood control master plan. So I'll get into that in a little bit too. We were actually, I'm sure you're all very painfully aware, there was some pent-up demand for as much precipitation as we could get. The actual forecast was about a fifty percent chance of above-average precipitation, which to me I interpret as a fifty-fifty coin toss. We got from October through May about eight and a half inches in Visalia, which is a little bit lower than average, but certainly more than we had had in the preceding years. The snowpack in the Sierra is another kind of monitor, or method to monitor the actual precipitation that we got. You can see that that was a little bit lower than normal as well. So El Nino didn't quite bring the wall up that we were hoping for, but there was a bit more rainfall than we had in the previous years. And looking forward, there's some models that are forecasting a potential La Nina event, which is a cooling in the Gulf Streams in opposition to the El Nino event. And those La Nina events typically result, or sometimes result, in below-average precipitation in Southern California. So a little bit of an opposite to the El Nino event coming forward. Here you can see some of the actual measured rainfall amounts that we did get. It's a bit regional, you can see Fresno did a bit better than average, but the others were a little bit lower than average. And this again is the snowpack results, the map and the numbers are as of June first this year. So statewide we're at about twenty-three percent of the average snowpack for the same time in the average year. And in our region, the south, it's about sixteen percent. Here's a couple photos, this is some, I guess the typical flooding that we saw. It's nothing devastating, but it's kind of that roadway flooding against, alongside the roads. You can see the crews on the lower picture there put out the flooded signs. More of a safety and nuisance issue than anything else, but that's fairly typical. We did have some that were a little bit more than this and probably quite a few that were a bit less. But generally the storms were dispersed evenly enough that the ground was able to dry, the water percolated or evaporated, and they didn't kind of come all together in that stacked up pattern that we were hoping would not happen. We did get about twenty-four days of rainfall throughout the year, so, but again, it was kind of staggered, there was usually two or three days in between each storm event. Couple more photos, kind of the typical. I know that I was sending out emails to you throughout the time periods when we were having storm events, so hopefully you were able to kind of follow along in somewhat real time what we were seeing. But when we talk about mudslides, debris on the roadway, this is the sort of thing that we were looking at. The lower right picture is after the crews have come in, cleared some tree branches that had come down on the roadway there. They get phone calls from CHP or residents, middle of the night, two AM, and they're out there within usually about an hour or so's time to get out and respond to those types of situations. One of our big concerns coming into the year that we were prepared for was similar to the photo on the left here. Because there hadn't been rainfall or much drainage in a lot of the creeks and channels, we were expecting quite a bit of debris to collect up at the bridges. We did a substantial amount of clearing prior to the rainfall events, but as you can see, there was some circumstances where some of that debris did catch and collect. And you can see kind of hidden behind the latitude, longitude, but we've got a backhoe operator up there that's clearing that debris, knocking it loose or picking it up and then hauling it away. And obviously with the rain up in the, it's not really a flooding issue, but we did have a fair amount of snow. Our road crews do a bit of snow plowing and then we also hire contractors to handle snow plowing, and I believe this photo's in the western divide. There were quite a few days of active snow plowing activities up in that area. So that's a little bit about kind of what we saw the previous year. Again, we were hoping for more rainfall, but I guess the silver lining is that there wasn't a significant amount of damage or safety issues related to flooding. Looking forward, certainly, you know, it's summer now, but we're not going to relax. We're pushing flood control projects. This is one that Ben was speaking to you about earlier today, so I won't go into too much detail, but it's our kind of number one priority here, the Cottonwood Creek Juvenile Detention Facility. One of the, I guess, themes that you'll recognize is we're no longer looking at flood control, it's just get the water past the location. It's now utilize that water as a resource as much as we can. So in this case, we've reanalyzed the project and established it as much a stormwater or groundwater recharge potential as it is a flood control project. And we think that'll make us more competitive within the grants, but then also it's kind of the strategy that I think many of these flood control projects will be using as we go forward in the future. Here again is the picture, I won't go into much detail, but it's that Cottonwood Creek to the north of Juvenile Detention. And you'll see the few groundwater recharge areas there. Number two is our Seville-Sontag ditch project. This one, we're ready to go as soon as the irrigation waters, the run stops in mid to late August, we're expecting. It's a set of culverts that cross under, or cross the road and connect Alta Irrigation District's Sontag Ditch to Stone Corral District's Stone Corral Ditch, which then would lead into a Stone Corral groundwater recharge basin. So additional floodwaters can be, kind of a relief valve of sorts can be passed over to the Stone Corral Ditch. It'll prevent the flooding within the community of Seville hopefully, and then will also allow increased recharge in the Stone Corral area. Design is complete, we're ready to take it out to bid and advertise. This will go to, out for construction contract, and we're planning on constructing in September here of this year and expect that to be done fairly shortly. It's probably a three or four week project, so it'll be done before the rain season of this year. A third project, Yetum Button Ditch, similar region up in kind of the Cottonwood Creek drainage area. But the problem here is again, we have additional floodwaters coming through some of the irrigation ditches or conveyance methods. And we're looking at acquiring some easements, flood control or ponding easements to, again, kind of serve as a relief valve to those waters and then increase some groundwater recharge in the area. So this project, we're preparing for construction fall of next year, and really the, I guess, the critical path item on that project is locating the properties, finding the property owners that would be willing to work with us as far as easements go. There is some fallow or low-value crop land out there that we could potentially use and kind of come to a mutually beneficial agreement on behalf of flood control district and the property owner.
Read a question for you on that particular project. Some of the land up there and recharge opportunities are fairly limited, it's very heavy clay. So I could see less of a recharge, more of a detention basin that could then be re-released later on and to access more of a recharge process. Is that what's contemplated by the...
Somewhere further down the stream potentially, yeah. There are methods to, you can drill through that clay layer, but depending on cost...
That's a different issue altogether, yeah.
So as I said earlier, we're looking at updating the flood control master plan. The flood control district prepared one in nineteen seventy-one, so it's a bit outdated. We've, I think, got one copy that's still available to us that hasn't just disintegrated the rest, or scans of scans of photocopies. But it took the whole county into perspective. And what we're proposing doing is dividing into three different regions and kind of, I guess, eating the elephant one bite at a time on this. The regions would be divided into somewhat hydrologic basins, but also they have similar conveyance methods, similar discharge locations, and then similar political regions. So as we get into Sigma with the strategic groundwater agencies, that's going to be a big part of kind of where these water resources are being utilized. So the first region that we're looking at, we're calling the Tulare-Fresno unit, that's in the north of the Coia River Drainage, includes the Cottonwood Creek, and it kind of incorporates those three projects that we've already talked about here. That's kind of the reason that we picked the priorities. Ben mentioned with... Ben mentioned with the JDF project that we're preparing a stormwater management plan as currently. As part of that plan, we're obtaining some LiDAR data or topographic data that's a bit more higher, I guess, more resolution to that data so that we can more accurately predict where the waters are going to go. There's been, since 1971, some changes to the topography due to either earth movement, improvements, or subsidence. So a big part of that $350,000 there is obtaining new topographic data for the region that'll be very useful for not only the master plan, but also future flood control and other county projects out there as well. So we're talking about working for that in this time next year. We'll be working on that stormwater management plan to get to this master plan update point. And then the following regions would be online soon thereafter. Here's a map, and north is rotated. It fit a little bit better on the screen this way, but you can see here kind of the county boundary jurisdiction here. And it's predominantly this yellow area that's that Tulare-Fresno Unit. You can see Coia here and Success there, so it's kind of that mountainous foothill region that is where the actual boundary of the unit that would be studied appears. And it's, again, it's that, kind of the northern Coia Drainage and the Cottonwood Creek Basin Drainage up there. Following regions would be the Coia and Thule Drainage Area or Unit, and then the Deer and White River Drainage Areas. With that, I'd like to thank you again for your insight, direction, and resources, both as we've responded throughout the year with the, with the rain events, and then as we move forward. Thank you to the direction of the County Administrative Officer. I'd like to thank the Flood Control Commission. They're a fantastic resource. These are the guys who know the way the water moves within Tulare County, and I utilize them quite often. And I failed to put it up there, but definitely, I'd like to recognize the road crews who get those 2:00 AM phone calls, and they're out there putting up the signs and taking down the trees. It takes a lot of resources to do that, and I'm appreciative that I've got them to make the phone call, too, and that they're willing and able to jump to it and get on that. So with that, just the recommended actions. Again, receive the summary report, which we've gone through, and then authorize staff to proceed with preparation of the master plan update for the Tulare-Fresno Unit.
Sure. I'll go ahead and make that motion, but I did want to say that there was one incident, we did get a little bit of above-average rainfall up in the north part of the county, and there was one incident, one, for one day, I think, when Cottonwood and Sand Creek come together, and the improvements that we made for the road, road ID construction were put to the test, and they did very, very well. So it was, I was anxious to get by there and see them. Glad I took the time, because, like I said, it lasted one day, and everything was so dry within one day that those creeks just went poof in the ground, and it didn't last very long. But when it was operating, it did a very, very good job. So appreciate these projects. I'm glad we're moving forward on, and it's been a long time since we've actually done flood control projects in the county. So much of our money has been allocated to the raising spillways on the dams and so forth, and I'm glad to see us moving forward with our own projects. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Gox. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous, thank you. Hey, let's move on to item number 77, the SubBasin Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Denise.
Good morning. Hope you guys counted your pages to tell Darla how many you've read. This morning, or, yeah, we're still morning. Good morning, Board. Denise England, Deputy CAO, Government Policy and Programs. The matter before you today is to get an update on the Coia SubBasin. As you know, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act went into effect in, was passed in 2014, went into effect of 2015, and since that time, groundwater sustainability agencies have been forming throughout the county in our three high-priority subbasins. In the Coia SubBasin, there was a facilitated process that started in, the first meeting was actually held in December of 2014, and then we actually received the facilitation services in March through December of 2015. And at the end of that process, those that were not within the mid-Coia GSA effort began meeting and forming the Greater Coia SubBasin. So that's a little bit, or Greater Coia GSA, that's a little bit of the background, and so we'll get into the presentation. So, like I mentioned, the Mid-Coia GSA was formed back in 2015. It's a JPA between the cities of Visalia, Tulare, and Tulare Irrigation District. The Greater Coia Group has executed an MOU. They have a nearly-final draft JPA document that parties have reviewed. The portion that is not completed is the governance portion. We have a governance structure that all parties agree on. However, they have left the door open to June 30th, so in about 16 days. For anybody else within the basin that would like to join the effort, there's still a spot open on governance that could be negotiated. But these are all of the entities that have either signed on to the MOU as a party or signed a commitment to be bound, and those are the Coia Delta Water Conservation District, the Kings County Water District, Cal Water, Lakeside Irrigation District, Tulare County, we signed it in November, the City of Exeter Lemon Cove Ditch Company, Wallace Ranch Mutual Water Company, St. John's Water District, Matthews Ditch Company, Fleming's Ditch Company. Didn't know we had so many ditch companies, right? Consolidated Peoples Ditch Company, Farmers Ditch Company, Ivanhoe Public Utilities District, Lemon Cove Sanitary District, Patterson Track Water District, and Hamilton Ditch Company. So back in November, when we looked at the Coia, the Greater Coia MOU, this was the proposed boundary. So as you can see, it covers all of those public agencies I listed, the largest being Coia Delta Water Conservation District, as well as all of the white areas. And just to familiarize yourself with that term, white areas are those lands that are referred, are lands that are not covered by a public agency. So they're not covered by an irrigation district or a mutual water company or any other public-type agency that could, could be a GSA for them under the law. Since that time, a group, and you'll see the mid-Coias there in the middle in the brown with the cities of Tulare-Visalia and Tulare Irrigation District, and the gray were public districts that were contemplating forming their own GSAs. So since that time, the Eastern Coia Group has put together an MOU. It has been signed by Lynnmore Irrigation District, Lindsey-Strathmore Irrigation District, Exeter Irrigation District, Ivanhoe Irrigation District, Stone Corral Irrigation District. I need to add to this list the city of Lindsey, as well Sentinel Butte Ditch Company signed a commitment to be bound. The group also lists Wachemna Ditch Company, Strathmore PUD, Lewis Creek Water District, Hawkeye Ditch Company, and Antelope Heights Water Company as being supportive. However, I, they don't, they didn't submit the signature pages, so I'm not sure if those boards have actually taken official action or not. And so, timing for GSA formation, the crater, the mid-Coia is going on, on their way. The county, I keep up with their agenda and minutes on their progress, but they've already filed with Department of Water Resources. They're considered the GSA for their area. The Greater Coia MOU Group has identified this timeline, July 15th to finalize that JPA document, August 1st to have all parties execute the JPA, September, hold the first board meeting of the JPA, October 7th, hold the public hearing, which is required before filing, to DWR, and November to notify DWR, and beginning in January to start gathering data and start writing the really expensive item, which is that Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And then by February, we would, that group would be presumed the exclusive GSA for the area. So that's the timeline. The Eastern Coia MOU, they have not provided a timeline, however, they had initially indicated that they, in order to fit with the Greater Coia's deadline, they were looking for decisions by June 30th, or June 15th, however, they've extended that deadline to July 31st. And then the law requires that a GSA be formed by June 30th, 2017, so I stuck that in there for them. The fiscal impacts of participating in one or the other or both of these MOUs, on the Greater Coia side, quite a bit of effort has been put forth to sort of put together what it might cost. I think we're all trying to figure out what it is we're, we're going to be building because the GSP regulations didn't come out until a couple of weeks ago, and we're, everybody's still trying to wrap their arms around it and try to figure out how best to accomplish that. But I will say, 2016, we have not contributed $9,000 to the Greater Coia effort. We have not actually received any billing from them. However, I believe Coia Delta Water Conservation District has spent quite a bit of money on legal services and providing a meeting space for, and staff time, we've all contributed staff time to moving that effort forward. The estimate in 2017, the county's share would be about $90,000, and then in 2018, it would go up to $170,000. And a lot of that has to do with timing of hiring staff for the agency, of hiring consultants to put together plans, and those costs can fluctuate depending on what actually needs to be put into that plan and how much work actually needs to be done. On the other side, the Eastern Coia Group, they've indicated that they believe their governance would be about $20,000 per year. That seems awfully low, considering I'm almost certain we've spent more than that just on legal services alone, and they don't have an estimate for consulting services or staffing or any of those other costs that are sure to come along. So it's not, it's unknown how much the county's contribution would have to be. After 2018, most groups believe that by that time, they could have some sort of assessment in place, provided that that process, whether it be a 218 or a Prop 26 process, goes smoothly, that it would be a fee to landowners, and so that these costs would be eventually passed on to landowners. And so based on which GSA landowners get put in would also impact what their, what that landowner's cost would be later on. And so this is the map that we're looking at now. So the, the blue is the mid-Coia, the pink is the Greater Coia, and then the dark green is the portion that is covered by public districts on the eastern side, and then we have a lighter green that indicates, a lighter green that indicates ditch companies or landowners that would like to go to the Eastern Coia, and then the lighter pink, which is really hard to show, tell on this map, but I believe you have a better graphic in your packet, that would like to go to the Greater Coia. And with that, I would take any questions. I know there's some folks here as well that would like to comment.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Richard Moss, 32492, Road 168, in Visalia. I am a director on the Ivanhoe Irrigation District. You've probably seen me in other, other times and other opportunities with a different hat on. But today, I'm here on behalf of the Ivanhoe Irrigation District and the group that is, has been created to form, come together to form the Eastern Coia SubBasin GSA. I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and again, hope to see action today that would indicate the county's support and willingness to become party to our MOU and to further the development of the Eastern GSA. I know there's concern about the slow start that we've had. There's probably two, there's more than one, but, or more than two, but there are two primary reasons that I see as the slow start, with the biggest one being that all of this hit, all of these districts that are, that are the basis for the creation of the Eastern GSA are federal water contractors and primarily what are known as Class 1 contractors that depend on receiving that surface water supply for their existence, for their ongoing existence. We were, we were all dealing with the second year of zero allocation, first time in history that it's ever happened to where these areas got absolutely no federal water supplies. That, quite frankly, was occupying all of our staff time, all of our directors' time, and trying to deal with that shortfall and figure out how we're, how we're going to manage that. Of course, the state, nobody waits while, while you're suffering through those circumstances, and went ahead and passed SIGMA and has, you know, people are moving ahead in the development of plans. We, I can tell you that we have had organizational meetings now, here most recently, and are on a forced march to get caught up. We have some greater, we have some very good examples of GSAs and their formation documents and, and how they've, how they've worked through it to work from. So I think our ability to get caught up will be of, will be pretty dramatic. The other reason that we've been slow to develop, quite frankly, is the very purpose that we're here today, and that is, there had, there had been an unwillingness on the county's part to clearly indicate that they would participate in our GSA. And as such, a lot of the white areas, including the ditch companies, we were concerned would not be able to participate, and thus, we have a great deal of uncertainty about our ability to draw our boundary lines, what will be in and what will be out. Things like budgets come from knowing how many acres you have to include within your, within your entity, and as a consequence, it was difficult to kind of cast a chill over our formation process. Again, hopefully, today, we'll, we'll work through that and see the opportunity to go forward with the county hand-in-hand. We've included the county in all of our formation discussions and look forward to continuing to develop the GSA for the eastern part of the county and, and work with the county to get it done. Be glad to take any questions.
I ask one question. So I'm looking, looking at the map, and I'm, I just need to have one question answered. Why not become a part of the Greater Coia?
Well, much like the City of Visalia and the City of Tulare and Tulare ID have reasons for what they want to do and why they've separated themselves out, you know, you could ask the very same question of them. Our situation, believe, is factually different enough that warrants us reasoning behind creating our own entity. The primary fact being that we are all, the majority of the area is covered by federal water service contractors. The other part of the area is, that doesn't have federal water service are typically pre-14 water right holders, ditch company holders that also have very good surface water rights. And quite frankly, our surface water rights, we think differentiate us from a lot of the rest of the Coia SubBasin. We're not sure how that plays out. Nobody's sure how all of this is going to play out. And as a consequence, we think it's best for us to be represented, to have our own, our own seat at the table, if you will, when it comes to the coordinating agreement, which is where all of this is going to get worked out between the GSAs within the Coia SubBasin. And again, not knowing exactly how representation is going to go, took the situation in our own hands and want to come up with a program that we clearly feel has a representation for the east side.
Didn't pull a real clear reason out of there, other than federal water versus...
We're factual, factually different situation in terms of our water supplies and our overall water balance than the balance of the Coia Basin.
I can answer that, expand on that question. There were some of us on the east side that have, do not have access to groundwater, and that's why we are dependent upon federal surface water.
Yeah. I mean, the region, that, that part of the, of the Coia Basin has a long history of importing a lot of water into the region to help from a regional water balance standpoint. Just Ivanhoe Irrigational District alone, the 10,000 acres that it represents, over its history has brought in over 600,000 acre-feet of water into the area. That if we didn't have that surface water, the groundwater would be, obviously, be that much further depleted. So we want to make sure all of that kind of gets recognized, the overall context of how this thing plays out, with, you know, the potential out there for either additional groundwater fees or groundwater curtailments. We want to make sure that our area, Supervisor Sheet is absolutely right. A lot of the area has very little groundwater, but the groundwater that we do have has been demonstrated through the last two years is critical in those very dry years. It's critical that we have it.
Sure. I'd like to make a real quick comment, because I think it kind of focuses our thinking. First off, the GSA adopted by the state allows for multiple, you know, the groundwater system... First off, the GSA adopted by the state allows for multiple, the Groundwater Sustainability Act allows for any watersheds for the creation of multiple GSAs. So there's, anybody can say, "I want to be a GSA." And at one point, I think some of the irrigation districts were going to be independent GSAs. They could do that, they choose to. Whatever, I mean, in other words, anybody can become a, create a GSA. And then the issue is, they have to coordinate all their efforts in the given watershed. That's a requirement. And all that has to get back to the state of California, they have to approve through the formation of GSAs, which is almost an automatic. And then the plan, that's another matter and it has to be coordinated. So there's no question but that the people on the east side can create their own GSA. We're not here to decide whether they can or cannot create a GSA. The issue is, as a county, we have to be responsible for those areas that are the white areas. The areas that are not covered by existing irrigation districts, water districts, ditch companies, something like that, where they're white areas, we have to be participants. So Alan and Sheehan and I met with this group sometime back in Exeter and my position is, first off, I appreciate the fact that these different GSAs are inviting us to participate because otherwise, we might end up with a little mini GSAs of our own, our white areas. So the idea of trying to consolidate these into three GSAs will create greater efficiencies. We have to participate because in the white areas, we're required to. And you're required to have every irrigable acre of land in your basin has to be covered by a GSA. So in my mind, there was no question about the fact that we would participate with all of the GSAs where we're invited to do so because we have an obligation to participate and we appreciate the fact that they're taking the initiative and we're not having to take the initiative. So I think that kind of helps to focus our attention here today. Are we going to participate with this group? And I would say absolutely because I don't want to go out there and create some other kind of an entity. I mean, we have responsibility and it would make sense from a geographic standpoint and mapping standpoint to try to put these together in a way that makes sense.
I would also add one other thing in that there's a long history with these districts and working cooperatively with the Cuiya Delta Water Conservation District and other entities in the area. And while the issues ahead of us, given the circumstances relative to the overall water balance in the region are very difficult, we're going to have a lot of whaling and gnashing of teeth, if you will. I nevertheless suspect, expect us to be successful and I know pledge our district to working cooperatively with everyone to make sure we are successful on a basin-wide basis. Questions? Thank you.
Afternoon. It was morning, but now it's afternoon. My name's James Jordan. I work with wonderful citrus. We farm about 10,000 acres in Tulare County, 7,000 acres in Cuiya Basin, 2,000 acres in Tulare Basin. I sit on as a Vice President of Sentinel Butte and the Vice President of Wachemna. Both are signed on to the East Cuiya. I was reading the staff notes and I was trying to figure out how best to put my comments together. It seems that there's been hesitation on the county to sign the MOU with the east side. That is stymie our formation because as I reached out to different growers in the white areas that are represented, will be represented by the county, they had no idea that they had an option. So they automatically would default to the Greater Cuiya. One of the questions asked was, "Why would you want an east side GSA?" Just the hydrology alone drives that. The fact that there's surface water available to the east side and very little well water separates you hydraulically different than the other ones. That's why the mid Cuiya was formed. And frankly, there would be more GSAs if the work wasn't done ahead of time to try to limit to three. So what I'm here to ask is to sign on our MOU so we can get started doing the business we need to do and get the east GSA up and running. As far as costs go, the costs are going to be to the county, you're going to be in three or you're going to be in two. Your costs are going to be there. Now, the seed costs for the east side are going to be accounted for by the districts and the ditch companies. We've already committed to pay for most of all the startup of this. So as far as the county goes, the first year, you're going to have limited visibility. And frankly, until you sign on the MOU, we don't know how many people are going to sign up to the east side. So we're, until you guys get signed on, we're kind of stymie. So I encourage you to just sign MOU so we can get started. Appreciate it. Any questions for me?
I don't have a question, but we've met with your group before, Supervisor Worthinge and I. And at that point in time, you were fragmented as to all the different districts and it wasn't known for sure that the east side group was going to go forward as a separate GSA. So at this point in time, the difference is, is you have people signed an MOU, so you do have an organization put together.
Correct.
For us, as the county can join. Before, you didn't have that.
We didn't have an MOU, Alan, but the staff that you employ was not as cooperative as they are now with moving forward. We were told we had to have continuous boundary. That changed.
Well, I understand that, but we made that change, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I appreciate you guys listening. I hope we can get that done so we can move forward, get that accomplished. Thank you.
Good morning. Mark Larson, Cuiya Delta Water Conservation District Chairman and this Board of Supervisors. Thanks for this opportunity. Apologize for this, but I need to go backwards to item number 76 real briefly, just to say that Reed is a very, he undermined some of the county's efforts here in that I have not seen county participation like I've seen before in the El Nino preparations. He went around to all the different irrigation districts, ditch companies, water people, and coordinated on the county saying, "What can we do to repair?" And I just really appreciate that and wanted to say that, that he did a fantastic job and I've never seen that from the county before. Extremely helpful, great things for the future. Really briefly, I just want to say, you know, Denise did a good job of explaining the different GSAs and the status of those. You know, after the mid Cuiya formed, the Greater Cuiya effort started underway with the county at the table from the beginning. And our goal has been, and still is, to make sure that the entire Cuiya sub-basin formed by Bulletin 118 is covered by GSAs. Not necessarily a GSA, but GSAs, recognizing in the end, we need to keep the state out. And we'd like to manage this here locally. So in the Greater Cuiya effort, we have, as Denise told you, the 21 MOU participants and we've been working through. We also have numerous stakeholders that have signed a petition saying they want to be a part of that process. That was worked out through some of the landowners. There's at least 24 of them. We've been working on establishing our governance and budget and basin evaluation and now have moved forward to figuring out what are the pieces for developing a plan. Yes, we have set a deadline for June 30th because there's a lot, a lot of work to be done to establish this GSA and we need to move forward with that. And so I really, number one, want to urge you to, if you can today, to make a decision on where you'd like to be on the east side with their formation of the GSA. The east side needs to know that. The Greater Cuiya needs to know that. And the landowners in the white areas really need to know that. So first and foremost, really appreciate it if you can come to conclusion today because timing is very critical. The county has many challenges with this. You know, how does it work for the county to be involved in two GSAs? What about boundary conditions? What about different situations from one side of the line to another side of the line for the county? There is an expense, obviously, for both GSAs. And, you know, in terms of economy of scale, how does that work out with your involvement in two GSAs? I think you need to consider that. So ultimate goal is that we want to be successful here in managing groundwater, to reach sustainability in that 20-year period or before if we can, and assure the state that we can be successful. So for the county, what's the best venue to do that? Is it being a part of two, being a part of a single GSA? How does that work best? I think that's the decision that's before you. So thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen Johannes. Again, I spoke earlier. I was born here. I love this area and I live in the county. And my husband and I and my mother, we all farm. We have some areas that are in both the white space and then we have some with district coverage. And I've been really trying to educate myself with the GSA formation and I've been to several meetings and I appreciate all the work that everyone's been doing. It seems we're all in the same bathtub, so to speak. We're all in this together. And so the plan is going to be hopefully done together and costs and resources would be done together. I think emphasis on working together is, that's my hugest, my biggest priority that I see in this. And I also want a voice. And so I went to this meeting, that outreach meeting, where all three of the GSAs spoke. They said where they were along in the process. And I really felt like it was a good fit and I felt best represented by the east Cuiya. And I just want to share that information. I got a real strong sense that they would be a good neighbor and work with the other GSAs. And that's really important to me. I felt represented best by the east Cuiya. And I can't say I necessarily felt the same about the mid Cuiya or the greater Cuiya. I can't, the mid's already done. Let's see. One last thing. Oh, about the white. That's a real concern to me that we would be kind of separated there if we were. If you did not choose to do that east side, I really, I want to be able to choose. I'd like that option to be able to choose, to be part in those white area properties, to be able to do the east Cuiya. And I would, I would like that freedom to choose. So I ask that you'd consider that. And then I noticed something on the legal litigation exposure. I went to something at Fresno State and they talked a little bit about it. I'm not quite sure what that all entails, but I know legally, we're all under the same laws. So whatever you're looking at for one GSA, you got to look at it for the others. So as far as litigation exposure, please consider it for no matter what. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to talk to this issue? If not at this time, the board will go to closed session for further discussion among the board.
I'd like to break for lunch.
I'm glad you wanted to take up this issue.
Well, let's take this out.
Well, no, he's got to come back for the other deal too.
Oh.
I thought it was going to be long issues.
I know they did.
Yeah.
Okay, board's back in session.
Chairman, again, I want to thank the various entities for stepping up and proceeding to create these GSAs. At this point in time, I think it's appropriate for the county to be signatory to MOUs in both the Greater Cuiya and to the Eastern Cuiya that's being planned right now. The actual details on where the boundary and so forth will be determined on the white areas have yet to be determined, but I think it's appropriate for us to sign an MOU to work with this other new agency as well.
Set a motion?
Second.
Made by Supervisor Worthinge, second by Supervisor Sheehan. Ask for your votes. Vote is four to one with Supervisor Cox saying no. Okay, well, I think what we're going to do at this time is we are going to break for lunch and then we'll be back in session at 1:30 and take up the other two items and then have our closed session. So that's kind of where we are. Thank you.
It's a culture change. It's one thing in the same room.
I forgot my cell phone. Did you call my office, please, or can I call? And I need...
Hi, Tiana. This is Michelle. Grant needs an outlet for his...
Oh, my gosh.
It's the HP.
Right. He doesn't have the plug.
She knows it. She's going to bring it over to you.
You do.
How you doing, mister?
No, I'm a resident of you and I don't have a lot of trouble.
Are they still in court? I wanted to do...
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get this thing going.
Okay, we're back in session. We'll take up item number 78, business opportunities for the Tulare Acres Professional Center. Mr. Hess.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Mr. Sims, John Hess, Deputy County Administrative Officer with General Services and Capital Projects. So this afternoon, we'll be talking a little bit about the opportunities that the building at 5300 West Tulare, known as the Tulare Acres Professional Center, also known as the Cigna Building, offers the county. There's a nice little graphic of the property.
Like the White House.
Yeah, very, very nice, very nice picture of the building.
It's white.
So the purpose of the presentation is, one, to provide a background of the property, outline several opportunities for using the property, discuss an operational analysis, and then seek the board's direction. As such, the presentation will be organized in that manner, first with some background, then enumerating the three opportunities, one, to maximize rent, two, to look at subvented departments, three, general fund departments, and then move into the operational analysis and conclusion and requested action. So a little bit of property background. First, of course, the county purchased it very recently in March for the amount of $15.25 million. The building is about 800...
Yeah, let's get this thing going.
Okay, we're back in session. We'll take up item number seventy-eight. Business opportunities for the Tulare Acres Professional Center. Mr. Hess.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Mr. Sims. John Hess, Deputy County Administrative Officer with General Services and Capital Projects. So, this afternoon, we'll be talking a little bit about the opportunities that the building at fifty-three hundred West Tulare, known as the Tulare Acres Professional Center, also known as the Cigna Building, offers the county. There's a nice little graphic of the property.
Like the White House.
Yeah, very, very nice, very nice picture of the building.
It's white.
So, the purpose of the presentation is, one, to provide a background of the property, outline several opportunities for using the property, discuss an operational analysis, and then seek the board's direction. As such, the presentation will be organized in that manner. First, with some background, then enumerating the three opportunities. One, to maximize rent. Two, to look at subvented departments, three, general fund departments. And then, move into the operational analysis and conclusion and requested action. So, a little bit of property background. First, of course, the county purchased it very recently in March for the amount of fifteen point two five million dollars. The building is about eight, one hundred and eighty thousand square feet. So, the total average purchase price was eighty-four dollars a square foot. There are three tenants in the building, Cigna Healthcare, Pearson View, and the IRS. The building was originally constructed in two thousand with an addition in two thousand and two, and we'll show that on the floor plans. The noteworthy features of the building are, one, that it has a full service generator for the entire building. And that, two, it has a cafeteria operated by Cigna also for the whole building. Currently, the, this table shows the building uses as they are today. Cigna being obviously our largest tenant at about eighty-two thousand square feet. The cafeteria that they operate is about five thousand, IRS is about seven thousand, and I'm rounding here. And then, Pearson is about twenty-one hundred. There's three vacant sections of the building, and we'll, I'll show you on the floor plan, how those break out that are available for the different uses that we'll discuss today. So, here is a floor plan. The top part of the graphic is the first floor, and the bottom part of the graphic is the second floor. So, starting at items one and two, those are both vacant spaces that were recently demised. That hallway that's in between them was constructed by the prior owner to create two smaller spaces for rental opportunities. Number three is the IRS. Number four is Cigna and the cafeteria on the first floor. Number five is Pearson. Number six is also vacant. Seven and nine are the two additions that were built on first and second floor to the north end of the building. And then, eight on the second floor is all of Cigna. They have, you know, two-thirds of the, of the top floor. So, we've, while analyzing this, we've kind of identified three major options for utilizing this property and maximizing the best use of this property. First would be to maximize private economic rents. Second would be to look at subvented departmental opportunities. And they'll all have a brief discussion regarding Administrative Regulation Number Thirty-five and how it pertains to that decision. And option number three would be to move a general fund department in there. Of course, the alternative always exists to combine some sort of combination of those three options. Option number one would be to maximize the economic rent through private rental opportunities. The building is about forty-seven percent vacant at the, at this time. With the fifty-three percent lease-up, we make about one point four seven million dollars of gross rental income annually, which is if you averaged it out per square foot of rented space, is a dollar twenty-eight per square foot per month. Extrapolating that figure further to the forty-seven percent, the county could generate at full lease-up, two point seven seven million dollars annually from that property of gross receipts. Possible uses that we could have for the building would be a traditional office environment, higher education institution, professional offices, legal, accounting, things of that nature, medical or dental offices, and governmental offices such as the IRS or other federal or state governments. The second option would be to explore relocating a subvented department to all or a portion of the vacant space. Just for clarification, subvented departments are those departments that receive the majority of their funds from non-county discretionary sources, typically the federal or state government. Administrative Regulation Number Thirty-five was adopted by the board about eight years ago. And as a general rule, that regulation states that subvented programs are to be located in non-county-owned facilities and general fund programs are to be located in county-owned facilities. So, as we make our decision, as you make your decision, and as we go through some of the slides here, that's something to keep in mind. The purpose of that, or the underlying premise of that, was that it ensures prudent use of county discretionary resources, that county general fund departments are not using their valuable discretionary funds to pay private rents. Of course, each space decision requires careful review of the facts and if it needs to be consistent with the regulation, or if there's a wise or sound reason to deviate from that regulation. Third option is to do the same exploration but with a general fund department. Relocate a general fund department into the vacant areas. After carefully analyzing all the different factors and all the different available departments that could move or have the ability to move, we do believe that this is a good, solid recommendation for looking at some of those relocations. First would be relocating the Tulare County Sheriff's Office to a large portion of the vacant area, which I have on a floor plan here in a moment. They currently operate out of Main Jail, Government Plaza, and a few other places. This would provide the opportunity to consolidate many of those functions into one place administratively. Additionally, relocating the Fire Department and EOC to that facility would also create benefits and cost savings. Finally, looking at the possibility of creating a co-located dispatch and communication center would probably be wise in the long run. Of course, there's building improvement standards that may apply to such a function in the building, which may, of course, create costs that would need to be explored for that purpose. So, here's a proposed floor plan, using that same floor plan of the first floor on the top and the second floor on the bottom. You can see the red section is, the red little box is for the possible location of a dispatch center. The blue location would be for the Fire Department and their EOC. And the purple area in between the Sheriff and the Fire on the first floor would be kind of a joint common space or undefined at this moment. Could be conference rooms, multi-use, things of that nature. And then, the two green boxes, both the half or third on the first floor and then the entire second floor, would be for the Tulare County Sheriff's Office. So, the benefits of this option would be, one, that it provides, it functionally locates the county's essential public services and their administrative functions therein in one location. It provides lease savings from the payment of leases for the Fire Administration property out in Farmersville. And then, also, it still protects or retains twenty-five thousand square feet of vacant space that could be utilized for maximizing economic rents, for putting on the market on another part of the building as well. Of course, we would want to look at a proposed relocation plan process and have the board very engaged in that with ultimately your final approval. The process getting to that final approval would be proposed to establish a review committee made up of two members of the board, the county administrative officer, the deputy county administrative officer, county building official, and the affected department heads. And that would provide a thorough and insightful vetting of all the different aspects of the plans. So, really quickly, just one or two slides on the operational analysis. The county will be providing building-related services as we do with our other buildings in the city of Isolia with our own forces. So, maintenance, custodial on grounds primarily will be county employees. The costs for the expenses associated with those services are recovered in two ways. One, what's called a CAM, or a Common Area Maintenance Charge for the private tenants, and then an ISF, Internal Service Fund Billing to the county tenants. So, we will be following up with personnel resolution pending further direction in another board meeting, the next board meeting, June twenty-eighth, for those positions to provide services to the facility. So, it's respectfully recommended that, one, the county look at relocating the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department to this property, as well as evaluating the costs associated with the relocating dispatch. Two, establish a plan review committee made up of the following members. Two board members, the county administrative officer, the deputy county administrative officer, county building official, and the affected department heads. Three, dedicate the rental income in a specific financial account allocated for this property to be used for needs and improvement costs associated with this particular property. So, in conclusion, the requested action would be to hear the report this morning and then provide direction to staff to move forward according with the identified uses. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
John, what are we paying now for the fire, the rent out of Farmersville?
I believe it's about a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars a year.
Give us a square footage price.
I think, I believe it's about a dollar fifteen or so, and Robert Newby can probably give more.
It's comparable to what we're getting for.
Yes.
I don't have any questions, but I would actually like to hear from any of the affected department heads or if anybody has a particular interest in the space before we, in our discussions.
Okay. Sheriff, like to... ...tell us his views?
Sure, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Can we put a time limit on? The floor is yours.
Our CAO, if I had about five minutes, just to compliment our CAO. You know, just on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, we have many sites that we're working on for the future of, of the department. As you know, the new jail structures are going in. We're looking at the anticipated approval of moving forward with the new facility on the north end. But the building that we're currently sitting in was built for a department of a hundred and twenty members. I have close to a hundred people working out of one building. We have eight hundred and fifty-one allocated positions now with the anticipation of future very quick growth in the Office of the Sheriff. We do have the plans that you mentioned of earlier, Mr. Cox. I didn't get a chance to speak to it. But we do have plans set in place as to a phasing process, as Mr. Worley had mentioned to the media most recently, as to a logical, reasonable step of phasing as to the development, increase in our personnel, as well as what we're gonna do with infrastructure. We're in dire straits. The Office of the Sheriff for our administrative building, we are, for lack of a better term, we are busting at the seams. I have approval for another administrative position, two administrative positions in the high ranks of our department that's much needed. I can't promote them. I have no office to put them in. That's where we're at. We have our IT supervisor manager that's working out of a remodeled lineup room. I have two captains working out of two closet spaces that we kind of hollowed out and painted and put carpet down. We're operating a modern Sheriff's Office out of an antiquated building. It just makes no sense. Now, having said that, we do have phasing ideas to save money. We'd like to move our narcotics division out of the current location that we rent. And we'd like to move them into the existing building we're in now. We'd like to take our step and gang unit and move them into the building we are now and make that an operational vicea substation. We'd like to be able to move to Cigna, make that our official headquarters division. We're already making plans and looking at, if on approval, that we would redistribute our beat systems so that we would have deputies operating out of the Cigna Building going north on the ninety-nine, south on the ninety-nine versus someone responding from the Arosi Substation all the way across county into the ninety-nine and Dinuba area. It cuts response time by almost fifteen minutes. We are looking at those phasing programs. But having said that, I, I just have to say, we're in dire straits. We're out of space, we're busting at the seams, we're growing. We have our plans that are between one, three, five, and ten-year outlooks. We're really hoping that we have the opportunity to make that move. If you have any questions, I mean, I've given you a very Reader's Digest version. You've been here a long time today, so, but if you have questions, I'm very happy to answer them.
One quick one, you intend moving everyone out of the Government Plaza as well?
We, we would like to. Taking a look at the space, we'd like to put everyone under one building. Our personnel and training, our detective units, we'd like to move them out of there and relocate to this headquarters location.
Mr. Chair, quick question. How about dispatch, Sheriff?
Dispatch, we have several different ideas and plans. In speaking with Mr. Hess, and I have to compliment Mr. Hess, he's an absolute delight to work with and he's an intelligent man who gets it. And so, we're very appreciative of him. But we have three different plans, or two different plans currently in reference to dispatch with a futuristic outlook in putting our dispatch center all under one roof, working side by side with Fire. However, if that doesn't pan out and it doesn't work, then we have two different ideas within the existing building that we could expand and put dispatchers maybe on the floor where our records division is now, giving them some sunlight, much-needed space. Any of you who have visited our dispatch center, we call it the belly of the well. And I think the belly of a well has more room than what our people are working out of now. It's not conducive to emergency services. It's just a compact area. And so, the plan would be hopefully to move in this location at some point. If not, then we would move them upstairs. We do have several plans, but the ultimate futuristic plan for the better of the citizens of Tulare County would be in this building here.
Sheriff, if you move the dispatch to the second floor, are you going to have substantial costs for all electronics and the wiring that's needed by dispatch?
Well, we, we already have the existing networking within the building itself. There will be some costs associated with it in having to get it upstairs. The cost of which, I don't have the numbers here with me. I know that we've looked at it and our IT people are looking at it now. There would be some costs, but not as significant as relocating the entire group to.
That's what I was looking for, is your cost moving them upstairs is substantially cheaper than moving them to Cigna.
It would, it would be. Well, upstairs would not be as expensive as moving to Cigna. But the ultimate futuristic plan, the better plan, is Cigna. But we do have options if you so choose.
I guess I'm curious, Mike, about, you know, that idea of a comprehensive plan of, of, I mean, that building not only was designed for a smaller group of people, but also from an energy efficiency standpoint and so forth, I've got to believe that's a rather expensive place to operate.
It is.
So, I mean, the idea of perhaps getting that actually shut down and not operated at all. I mean, have you considered doing that?
Well, it's a combination of, and I, as I, as I heard you all speaking this morning, I thought, well, hey, we have these plans set up already. Someday, at some point, we can give you the PowerPoint on it if you so choose. The expense of the administrative side, the single floor, we would want to use that to our best benefit. Where the cost is, is the jail. The jail is the expensive part, keeping that thing up and running and keeping it where it meets our standards and meets the standards of the state. That's an expensive component. When it comes to building the new jails, we would use that space to phase inmates in as the buildings are built, phase them out, use it to our benefit to relocate inmates with the ultimate plan of shutting that place down. The upstairs. The bottom area would be less expensive to run than the entire building, and I think we could use it to our benefit. Where my office is now, in that, that administrative floor, we'd like to put a patrol division in there. We'd like to put our SWAT team in there. We'd like, the SWAT team currently rests out in a hidden location that you guys are aware of. But this would be a centralized location that we could respond throughout the county. We could put our heavy equipment in the parking lot there, and we could really use it to our benefit, I think, while closing down the rental and moving out of Government Plaza.
Do you have option H, I, or J where you've looked at the cost of raising, just raising that building down to dirt? Has that ever been, you know, because that was, that's been discussed for years, is to move everything you have out of there, get it down to dirt, and then do something that would be, you know, smaller, more affordable to operate and more functional?
Yeah, I have not looked at that cost.
Or maybe that could be option H or something like that.
That'd be option X.
I mean, we're looking at a building that's sixty, pushing sixty years old?
Yeah, it's built in nineteen sixty-two. Yeah, so built in nineteen sixty, opened nineteen sixty-two. The building itself.
You gotta be careful with what you say, because we don't want to say things that are built that, at that age, need to be pushed down, because I, yikes.
Well, the building was built to last, a lot like our chairman. But, you know, the feasibility of continuing to operate out of there is just, it's not conducive to effective core services for the community. Our patrol division is growing, everything is growing, and we're operating out of just substandard office space. And it's time to move. Eight hundred and fifty-one, the building was built for a department as a whole countywide for a hundred and twenty people.
I mean, I, I entrust that you've done a lot of homework and due diligence into this. And the option that Supervisor Cox mentioned may be an option you, you'd want to consider. But we have an opportunity now with the purchase of the Cigna, the Cigna Building, and you having the need that you have to really put the two together and save you some money, help you achieve your long-term goals, maybe to where the plan that Supervisor Cox was talking about may not even be need, need to be considered for several more years because of this opportunity. So, I, I put my faith behind your consideration and due diligence that went into this, and I'm definitely supportive of you and your, your team moving over to Cigna as proposed.
Sure, I appreciate it.
And down the road, we might get with Eric Coyne, we might have a filming company want to come in and implode that old jail, so that could be a way to cut.
Make some money off of it.
No, I'm also supportive of it too, Mike.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I think the issue for me is, like you said, the devil's always in the details. So, if it makes sense, if you're going to continue to operate out of the existing building but repurposing it for different purposes, it might make more sense to look at leaving dispatch there than moving it all over there. Unless there's some economies of scale that could be done by consolidating with Fire. If that, you know, I mean, I think all seems to be looked at. And I guess that's my whole thought, is that as we get ready to make these, these changes, what does the big picture look like, you know? And what are the opportunities to reduce costs from an operational standpoint or efficiency standpoint? Or what can we do? Because there's gonna be, there's gonna be some really serious constraints on this board in terms of funding the needs of the department, you know, going forward. And, and so, looking for every opportunity to save something here so that we can plug that for something over here. You know, like I said, if there's the opportunity of putting Fire and Sheriff Dispatch together, and that makes sense to do that, and there's an overall savings and so doing, which I would think there should be, then, I mean, that's something to look at. Otherwise, I, I've always felt like the Fire Dispatch is, not only looks temporary, but... Of course, I guess the flea problem has gone away. I haven't heard anything about the flea problem.
But I, I really think that that, you're, you're, you're talking about more of the comprehensive facilities needs. needs, and I think that would be something that this ad hoc committee could really look at in more depth and talk about those things going forward. I think if we just get a general plan in place, then we can figure out the nitty-gritty details and making it all happen.
Right, and so, there's, obviously, there's space at Cigna to do those things, but then the other option would be to leave certain projects in different places, and this should move your administrative offices over there. That was, that was my concern, was I wanted us to have that more of a comprehensive...
And we have those set in place. We have a phasing plan. We'd be happy to, I mean, obviously, we've talked about it, but for example, in long term, if we temporarily put dispatch here with a plan of a three-year, five-year outlook to move over as the money comes and grants are available, that type of thing, we have all that lined up.
So, Mike, are you thinking then that with, with the new jail coming online in Porterville, that you would see that as a time then to actually close the jail portion of the main jail?
No, I see that as the opportunity that if we move forward with the North County facility, moving those inmates into the main jail, tearing down all the infrastructure in the north part of the county to allow us to build, take those inmates, push them back out to that facility, and then finish up with the jail.
So, just a kind of a shuffling around goal.
And we would, we would need that building to do so.
But the ultimate goal would be to get that shut. Because what I'm looking at is that, you look at all the deputies you've got there, you could, some of those could then be assigned out to the facility out at...
That's true. And we have that in phasing plans as well. How many can we use to open the facility? There's a five-year outlook for the South County facility. We have a very minimal amount that we would need to open that facility to start in the first couple of years. So, we recognize the issues and strains that you would be looking at.
Have you also considered moving your headquarters and administration to Porterville at the new jail facility? I know that'll work more efficiently, logistically, for you.
If my office was as big as you, as the... Then we'd consider it. Okay?
Mr. Chair, I'm fully supportive of that. When we did the first walkthrough, I could literally see that happening. But I'm also very supportive of establishing this committee because we saw what happened when we had a space planner get involved and things ran real amok. And so, I think it's important that we have boots on the ground, excuse me, now, looking at it from the beginning so that things don't run amok, that we're with, that we stay within the cost, because I know they're going to need things. But, you know, if the committee goes into this eyes wide open, knowing what a potential budget would be, instead of not figuring out what your budget is until you've thrown in everything you want, which is what we had, I think we're going to get this done quicker and efficiently and within budget. So, I'm very supportive of this and very supportive of staff recommendation.
Can we hear from the fire chief? Fire chief?
Our needs are not as diversified as the sheriff's. We started in 'oh-seven with a somewhat temporary plan to move into the Farmersville facility, and City of Farmersville has been great to work with on this. Dispatch center, yeah, it's on wheels, so we could definitely upgrade the facility there. Some of the infrastructures there, we've done a good job in upgrading that over the years, but moving into a co-located, not consolidated dispatch center would be optimum. I have, again, chiefs working out of cubicles, low expectations of privacy when you're dealing with sensitive matters, it would be a great move for us, the EOC component, and then working on joint projects with the sheriff's department, having one-stop shopping, getting that out, and in the close proximity to the majority of our county business in the vicea area would save us. Being out on the fringe, we're coming up on that ten-year anniversary mark, it'd be a great morale builder for our department, too. So, a minute and nineteen seconds. And entertaining questions you might have.
Well, I was just going to say, it seems like it would make, in your case, it would be savings, because we go from paying rent out there to our own county facilities. So, that one certainly makes a lot of sense to, to me.
Our basic needs are just EOC, training room, conference room, and then office space.
Then later on, if not initially, the idea of co-locating dispatch and seeing what that means from a, you know, cost-effectiveness standpoint. Because there was, there was some, we talked about that initially, and there was some reluctance about co-locating at the time. But different figures, different personalities, and I mean, to me, it happens all over, and it makes, it makes a lot of, if it makes sense financially, then hopefully we could make, we could deal with it operationally.
Sheriff, I have a question.
I've got an answer.
It might be off the wall, but where's the ambulance service dispatch?
TCAD. It is located, there's one over on, I believe, South Merritt. They just moved out of the Court Street facility, so...
But they have a central dispatch?
Yes, they do. It makes fire come look very, very good.
The reason I asked that question, that could be a tenant.
Oh, yeah? Potential.
I think that's great. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the feedback, and I'd wonder if there's any other departments that would like to...
One quick question. The, our EOC, is that something we can just pick up, move over? I know you've got to rewire it, but we're in Farmersville. We can just literally pick that stuff up and move it, can't we?
Yes, with the IT and the infrastructure going in, yeah, we'd be fine. All we need's space.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Do you have somebody wanting to speak to this?
Well, see if there's any other departments that are here to comment.
The other departments want to speak?
County departments.
Have John Jansen, Farmersville City Manager.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. John Jansen's with the City of Farmersville. And I wanted to just start off by congratulating you on your acquisition of the Cigna building, because as a, as an administrator, as a citizen of Tulare County, as a taxpayer, you've done very well for yourselves to get a building for pennies on the dollar versus the cost to construct it. That will hopefully lead to efficiencies from consolidation and ability to grow your various departments. So, the board really should be commended for that forward-thinking. With respect to the City of Farmersville, we have long enjoyed the tenancy of the fire administration, and they're welcome to stay as long as you need them to stay. The difficulty for us or the concern is that we, we're anxious to know more about the overall timeline and the phasing of any changes that take place, because the rental revenue that we receive from the county is a significant portion of our unrestricted general fund, and I know that you all can appreciate that. And so, that is equivalent to approximately one and a half police officers in our small town of fifteen officers. And unfortunately, this year, because of a loss in safer grant funding to our fire department, which we're waiting to receive word if we'll get new funding provided to us, we're going into our new fiscal year in a deficit position. And so, our city council adopted our budget based on a deficit last night, and the loss of the rental revenue will only exacerbate that deficit position. So, for us, this is very essential and critical, and we would just ask, with all due respect, that any information you can provide to us regarding the timing and the phasing so that we can understand better. Can we expect six months of revenue, three months of revenue, one year's worth of revenue, et cetera, in the year ahead? Would be very appreciated, so... And if you have any questions of me, I'd be pleased to respond.
John, thanks for being here today. I appreciate your questions and concerns, and I think they're very much legitimate. But it also raises the thought that there, is there possibly, within the county family opportunities to use your, their facilities for something other than fire in Farmersville? We obviously have a lot of different departments, and I'm not sure about our space needs, but that would be something for us to look at in terms of being of some assistance to Farmersville, if we would be able to locate some other of our county facilities out in that, in that site, if that would be, if it works for us and it works for you.
And Mr. Worthley, I appreciate that very much, because I've had that conversation with Mr. Spada to keep us in mind if there are other agencies that perhaps are paying higher rent or their leases are coming up. If you want to be able to serve the East County in a more effective way, we'd be open to any and all proposals before we find ourselves in a position of having to go out and try to market it, market it to the private sector. So, you'd always be welcome.
Keep you in the loop on what we're doing, too.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing none, this was just information only, wasn't it, this update? I don't think we...
I had recommendations.
Oh, direction, okay.
Specifically related to the committee, I would volunteer myself to sit on the committee to look at this and how we are going to allocate...
As would I.
Departments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the requested direction is housed in the recommendation.
The recommendation was to send the sheriff out.
Okay. Hold on a second. Do you want to vote?
I can put the slide back up on the screen.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, let's do that.
I would recommend that we approve all three recommendations, relocating the sheriff's office and fire department to the property, evaluate costs associated with relocating dispatch, two, establish plan review committee, including the peoples listed, and three, dedicate the rental income in financial account to be used for building needs.
And I had a question on number three before we go to vote. Dedicate all rental income or a portion of rental income?
The, the idea would be all. Everything associated with the receipts from that property in one, in one fund allocated for that building.
Just so everything generated by that building stays in that building?
All the cams, all the ISFs, all the actual rental receipts, all in that building.
And the follow-up on that, because I had that question, too, is that, we don't, we don't, we haven't seen a budget yet, so I don't know. I mean, right now, we're talking about one point, about four million dollars a year we're bringing in. We don't know what is needed from the standpoint of cost of that billing. I'm assuming there's a, there's some gap in there. Are you looking at some of that would be used for some of the purposes we're talking about of making building improvements for the new tenants? Would that be part of that money be used for that purpose also?
Definitely. Those could be used for the improvements that we talked about today, as well as other ones to be identified.
But again, from a long-term perspective, I'd like to see us looking at, what do we need to do? I mean, is it, is it possible to siphon off some of that money down the road? I mean, do we need to keep all of it just for the building? I can see where we do need to do it now, because we've got to make a lot of tenant improvements to use it for the building. But down the road, it may have alternative, alternative uses.
Well, I think you look at how the fund is going and how big it gets.
And I also wanted to add a potential, number four, to these recommendations, and that is, I know that there's a small portion of the vacant square footage that does have potential for lease value, if I'm not in, am I still correct on that?
Yeah, about twenty-five thousand square feet would still be available.
Okay, and do we have prospective tenants for that potentially or not?
The Realtor that helped us work with buying the property, who represented us through that process, he has had definite interests. He has had people come up to him relative to interest.
Because that can further help our economic position there, too. So, I want to make sure we still have that, that small portion that we can...
And pursue it.
And pursue it. So, I would add that forth, pursue the active leasing of that space.
I will amend my motion.
Anything else you'd like to add to that?
Yes, Mike, what would you like to drink with that order?
So, who was the motion? I thought maybe you were going to put on there that Pete and Phil will be the two representatives from the board of supervisors.
He already said that. He already said that. You want to be on there, too?
No, I don't want to.
We can only have two of us.
No, I'm happy with you.
All right.
Are you voting?
Michelle, are you confused?
So, who made the, who made the...
I made the motion, and I'll add number four, to have staff pursue the option of leasing the twenty-five thousand vacant feet.
And I second that.
Yeah, I have a question before we vote. Ballpark timelines of putting this new committee together, when we're, are we going to kind of come up with a decision on what improvements?
I say we put the committee together at three-thirty.
Yeah, committee could be done immediately, and then we could convene within the, you know, certainly a week or so and begin that, you know, that discussion about the timeline.
He took a week longer than me. I would have done it today at three-thirty.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Good presentation. Thank you, everybody.
Just to make it consistent.
Okay, we'll move to the last item on our agenda. Lemonizing the positions due to the transfer of Lake Patrol Enforcement Services.
So, good afternoon, John Hess, WCAO General Services. This is a follow-up to the item that was heard on May twenty-fourth regarding that transition. As directed, the county did conduct meet and confer with the impacted employees. We're now ready to proceed with the transition as well as initiate the layoff process, and the impacted employees have each been offered positions within the Parks and Recreation Department and General Services. The effective date of the layoffs will be Saturday, July twenty-third, the end of a pay period, and if it is approved this, this afternoon now. So, with that, very briefly, I would request that the board delete the positions and initiate the layoff process. Human Resources Director Rhonda Schustrom is also available for questions.
Yeah, I do have one person wanting to speak to this issue.
I was just going to say, I'm glad to hear that these affected employees were offered additional employment opportunities with the county. I'm really glad to see that.
Okay, Jose.
Good afternoon, Jose Segala with SEIU. I just wanted to say a few words. First of all, I just wanted to recognize that today is the end of a long year-plus journey that four employees started a year-plus ago. Four unique employees, four of the, of the kind in the state of California. As you know, Tulare County is the last one to transition boating, the patrolling of the lakes to the sheriff's department. So, they came a year ago to bring issues forward about their safety, their training, their concerns, and over the year, the sheriff's department, obviously, through your support, has taken over those operations. And so, it's sort of, they're sad. I mean, they couldn't be here today, but obviously, they're sad because they're going to be losing a position that they really, really cared for, that they really worked hard in the public, to provide public support and safety. So, that's sort of kind of the sad part of it. But I did want to commend Ms. Schustrom, Eric Martin, and Mr. Pilliard, and Mr. Hess for sitting down with us. We have, we had a couple of meetings since the last time we met. I think we might maybe have one last meeting before the layoffs take place, but wanted to thank them for taking your direction, as Mr. Vanderpool said, to continue to have these employees who are very committed and dedicated to the county, have an opportunity to continue their service with the county. There's been a position offered, or positions offered to them, and so, they have had a great understanding of the layoff process, a great understanding of what it entails to transition into those positions. So, we're hoping that they decide soon. They've been given that opportunity to decide soon where they want to go. But just wanted to thank them and working with SEIU to try to address the employees' concerns. And I hope that at some point that you could recognize them for the hard work they've done over the years. Obviously, the sheriff, in their report, did highlight that that was a hazardous position that they had for many, many years, and it took them coming forward in order to, to address the greater public safety. So, obviously, now that the sheriff's department has taken over, there will be a lot more resources available to the public as they go out and enjoy our lakes. So, again, I wanted to thank HRD and their staff for working with us on making this as smooth a transition as possible. As you may know, it's, it's a difficult thing for someone to lose a position that they really enjoy doing every day. So, again, thank you.
Chairman? Under Supervisor Cox, I forgot to report that I attended Three Rivers Community Town Hall Meeting last Monday, and the response from the Town Hall Meeting was that the people are very supportive and happy of the fact that the sheriff's department is now in charge of the Lake Patrol. And what I said on the radio this morning is that those people who are cited driving a boat under the influence, it's like driving a car. I mean, it's a very important, it's a very severe penalty for doing that, and we have the ability now, because we have sworn officers, to cite people. So, I think everybody's really pleased. I know that the manager of the lake is extremely pleased from the Corps of Engineers side, so I think it was a good move.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure on this? Moved by Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Do we have need for a closed session? Counsel?
Yes, we do. We, we have items C through U. Item T has been pulled, and I do expect a announcement out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, item R, I'm sorry. On June 14th, the Board of Supervisors approves settlement with the remaining six defendants in the Inray Municipal Derivatives Antitrust Litigation Master Docket Number Eight hyphen zero two five one six, and the County of Tulare versus Bank of America Excel. The vote is as follows. Phil Cox, motion. Supervisor Alan Ashida, second. Was the unanimous decision. The opposing parties accepted the county's settlement offer. The settlement offer is attached.